Good evening, everyone. It is so nice to see all these beautiful faces joining us tonight. Thank you, thank you for coming. This work session of the Board of Trustees of the Spring Independent School District is officially called to order on Thursday, October 7, 2021. The time is now 6:02 PM. Board Trustees present, Winford Adams Jr., Carmen Carrera, Kelly Hodges, Deborah Jensen, Natasha McDaniel, and myself, Rhonda Newhouse. I would like to ask everyone to turn off or silence their cell phones or electronic devices at this time, please. Thank you. The first order of business tonight is a review of the minutes from previous meetings. Does any trustee have any changes or corrections to the minutes of the September 2, 2021 board work session, the September 7, 2021 regular meeting, the September 20, 2021 special call session, or the September 27, 2021 special call session? Okay. Hearing none. These items will be submitted as part of the consent agenda at the October 12, 2021 Board of Trustees regular meeting. We will now hear from our Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Rodney Watson.
Thank you, President Newhouse and trustees and those of you all in the audience. Good evening. We do have a full agenda tonight. We are excited to be able to bring you an update of our BOI assessments. We know last, last time we got together, we looked at some of the goals that we are going to be working on, and we've talked this past spring about wondering where our students will be. So today, we're going to bring you an update based upon the beginning of the year assessments that gives us a really clear picture of the gaps that's needed based on the pandemic and the other issues that have gone on. And so, we're wanting to do it a little different than what we've done in the past. Instead of it being a presentation, we know it's a work session, we'd like to have conversation about the data. We have slides and data that we're going to go through, but we'd like to stop and really give you all our understanding of the data, have you all ask questions. So as we're looking at the goals that we've established this past week, we can begin on the same page. And so, with that, we're going to be asking some of the team members that represent some of the departments and special pops to come forward and sit around with us so we can have a discussion about our data. In addition to that, we know this past week, you all did charter a new committee that Mr. Adams is going to be leading. And so, based upon our conversation Monday, Ms. Westburgs are going to talk a little bit about student-based budgeting from an equity perspective. And so, once again, we'll have a conversation, we'll have an opportunity to have some conversations as Mr. Adams leads his group in that work. So we're going to go ahead and jump in, and I'll hold the rest of the comments until Tuesday. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Watson. As we continue, our next item is Agenda Participation. This item allows members of the public an opportunity to speak on agenda items before those items are considered by the board. Mr. Binkley, do we have anyone registered under Agenda Participation?
No, Madam President, we do not.
Okay, thank you. So as we continue tonight, for our next item, I'd like to recognize our Chief of Innovation and Equity, Dr. Lupita Hannah-Hosser.
Thank you, Ms. Newhouse and members of the board. At this time, I'd like to invite Dr. Jennifer Cobb. She's our Assistant Superintendent of Research Accountability and Testing. With her, we also have two of our team members. We have Dr. Talicia Edwards, who's our Executive Director of Special Education, along with Ms. Marie Mendoza, and she is our Executive Director of Academic Services. She oversees the Gifted and Talented Program along with our Bilingual and ESL Program. As Dr. Watson said, you know, today, we want to share with you our beginning of the year, or BOY, beginning of the year screener data that we've conducted in elementary, middle, and high school. And we do want to have it as a dialogue, have some time to really look at the data, think through what it's telling us. We're also looking for trends ourselves. And then, also keeping in mind that this is our first year back face-to-face with all of our students after having, you know, a year of the pandemic last year, and then an interrupted year the year before. So about 18 months, our students being virtual or learning from home. So at this time, I'd like to invite Dr. Cobb to share her screen, and we'll start our discussion.
Would this be the PowerPoint?
And while that's coming up, you do have a copy of the PowerPoint in a pink folder that is at your seats.
Sorry for that delay. President Newhouse, members of the board, Dr. Watson, we're happy to join you today to discuss the BOY results for MAP, growth, circle, M-Class, and Adele. We consider these our universal screeners for beginning of year. As we go into the details, we'll discuss the groups that are tested and the subject areas. So, the first test that we'll be talking about today is MAP Growth. And for those of you who that have been on the board for a little bit, this is not a new test for you. We've, this is now our fourth year of administration for this test. MAP stands for Measures of Academic Progress. It's a computerized adaptive test. This year, we piloted it in high school, and you'll see the results of that. For this year, grades three through eight reading were administered, tests were administered, and grades K through eight math were administered. In the orange, you'll see circle, and circle is our pre-K screener. It is technology-driven, however, it is a one-to-one that teachers do with the students. It assesses progress in literacy, math, and social-emotional learning, and writing. And then, M-Class Adele is new to us this year. It's a full literacy assessment solution. The assessment is available in both English and Spanish. There's flexibility in the administration, and it's for grades K through two. And we'll get into more detail about this later, but just to be certain that I say this, that we had switched to M-Class and Adele because the universal screeners that were previously approved by TEA changed. So last year, we did TPRI, Tejaslay, and now we do M-Class Adele. So if you remember those assessments, that's the reason for the change. So we're going to start with the beginning of year, MAP. And before I go through all this data, and Dr. Watson and Dr. Hannah-Hosser both alluded to this, we really want to frame the kind of the conversation around the thought of, as we go through the slides, we would like you to find and focus on the trends in the data that you see. Think about the impact of COVID and the impact that it has in our long-term planning. So I'm going to spend a little bit of time here kind of unpacking the graph or the chart for you. So what we have here is the beginning of year MAP reading for grades three through eight. So you'll see in the columns, we have 2019, 20, beginning of year reading, so that's pre-pandemic. Then, in the blue, the middle columns, you'll see 2021 end-of-year reading. And then, we have this administration that we just finished in September, the 2021-22 beginning-of-year reading. So as you may remember that last year, we were, at the time, we were in the middle of school closures and not having complete in-person learning. So we actually decided to do the beginning-of-year TEA screener. So we don't have a BOY for 2021. So we looked at the end-of-year reading to see if the changes between, to hopefully see a longitudinal result of changes over the last three years. So you'll see that there's kind of a buff horizontal line going through if you look at grade three. So we did that in order for you to kind of track, so that grade three in 1920, then they go into grade four in 2021, and then they'll be in grade five in 2122. So you can take this as a group or a grade transition. It's not cohort, meaning that it's not all, only the kids that tested those three years, but this is how they would matriculate through the system. So as you can see with the results, that if we're looking at 2021 EOI reading, in the middle, we had 20%, or I'm sorry, 60% of our students on or above grade level. And here, for beginning-of-year reading, we were at 62%. So I spent a little bit of time explaining the chart to you. This would be a time where I'd like to, for you to read and absorb the data that's here, and maybe ask questions or thoughts that come to mind.
Dr. Cobb, when are these administered? Does it happen like the first week of school, or?
So, beginning-of-year reading, for the past three years, it occurs after the first, after the first week of school, full week of school, they have mainly SEL. For the most part, administrations, it depends when in August we start, it would either be the last week in August, or the first week in September, and then it's a three-to-four week window for administration.
And these exams, these assessments are administered all on one day?
No, they're over time.
Okay.
So one thing I do want to draw your attention to is the footer at the bottom with the 65% end-of-year. So this aligns with the strategic plan priority. We're currently at 62%. So you may think, okay, 62 to 65 is not a lot of growth. However, please keep in mind that with MAP, the criteria of being on grade level rises as the year goes on. So the term and phrase we use is the water rises as you continue. So they actually have to continue to be on or above grade level and progress forward, and then exceed that by the end of the year.
I don't see a lot of learning loss here. Am I reading this wrong?
No, you are, you are correct. And that's, and that's part of the reason for the pause, to see if that's, you have surmised that well. Part of the, what, part of what we can attribute this to is our focus that happened in summer school and the focus on the crimsy curriculum. We also had the largest participation in summer school that we've had in past history. We did have some conversations about this with the principals. We actually presented this yesterday to them, and they were talking about the, also, keep in mind with reading, that it's, when you learn to read, then you can read to learn. And once you've kind of made that hurdle, then learning can continue, and it's, it's less, the skills can continue to improve. And also, the reading skills are recursive. So you come back to things like theme and genre and author's point of view. And so, those things can, you build upon them as opposed to math, which you know well, is a skills building that's more lockstep.
Thank you.
Okay. But I'm going to move on to the Spanish.
Before we go, let me make sure I am understanding this.
Yes, ma'am.
Because I'm seeing in 2019, 2020, 2019, 2020, our students were at 64% total there, and we went down a little bit, 2% in 2021 to 2022. And I'm relating that to the middle, 2020, 2021, the pandemic time that we had there. Again, we're showing our students did regress about 2%.
Correct, correct.
That's what I'm looking at.
One thing I want to make sure to, to point also with the end-of-year reading for 2021, we did have some online administrations, and people were in virtual settings. So you will see that really this is the only time we're looking at in the, well, no, actually, it plays out in a couple of other tests where we do have the impact of, of students being administered a test virtually. So you can, you can think about the different environment, a less, less secure environment, you know, you could have somebody next to you helping, whatever distractions, whatever may be. But I just want you to keep that in the back of your mind because that, that will kind of play out throughout this, these results.
So I don't really.
I'm looking at, we can make that up. This is the beginning of the year. We got a whole year in which we can make this up.
I don't really read that as a regression.
Yes.
Because we're not comparing apples to apples when we go from the, the column that's 2019, 2020 to 2020, 2021. One of those, the far left one is a beginning-of-year assessment from the previous school year. The next column you're seeing is an end-of-year assessment after a much longer gap. So that's, that's where the learning loss that they were talking about in Austin occurred. And it looks like we picked up ground, like I'm actually quite impressed by the lack of learning loss in many cases. As you read the columns going down diagonal, we are, we are seeing some nominal growth at a time when I think everybody was saying we were going to see a lot of learning loss. So I'm just surprised at how little learning loss there is.
See a change for math, but for reading, it wasn't as big of a gap, absolutely.
Very good. Okay, so let's move on. So we're looking, the same look, same tests and administration. However, this time, we're looking at the Spanish administration of MAP for grades three through five. And the reason why it's three through five is so that we don't administer the Spanish exam, grade six to eight. So here, you do see more of a loss if you're looking just at the total. If we go from each administration, 71% to 66 to 64. With some of the conversations that we're having, some of this can be attributed to, as you get to fifth grade, students are testing out of Spanish and transitioning over to English. So what you, what you sometimes have are the students that are struggling the most to be able to transition into English, so you have a smaller pool, and it could be also a struggling pool. So hopefully, you can read this. These are the same results that we had just gone through, but now we're looking at some of the sub-populations that we're monitoring. So what we have, reading left to right, African-American, Hispanic, white, eco-dis or economically disadvantaged, left, sped, special ed, and GT. So what you have here in the blue, that would be that BOY assessment we were looking at before, the green being the EOI from 1920 that we're looking at for, and then the BOY from this administration. So I want you to get comfortable with this look because you're going to see it several times with all the assessments that we're doing.
Dr. Cobb, do you ever disaggregate populations, for instance, African-American economically disadvantaged versus those who are not? Hispanic disadvantaged versus those who are not?
We do on occasion, yes. I mean, not with every administration of, with our district getting closer to, and I've been warned by Ms. Westburgs, it's a moving target with our population being 87% economically disadvantaged, we're almost, in some cases, we're almost talking about the total population at the same time.
Yeah, I just thought that might be an interesting data piece for the Equity Committee.
That's, that's absolutely correct. And we do have some indicators like in RDA, which is another accountability system where we actually do look at African-American males, African, we disaggregate it that way because that's, they're actually looking at those disproportionalsities. Are we good to move on? Or let me tell you, explain just a little bit of what I've seen. From what I see here, that the trends in the results are very similar to what we see in STAR, where our GT students are high achieving, our sped students are the lowest groups, and our left population also struggles. What we will see here that will be different than when we get to math is there is some consistency in the results year over year. We're, okay, we want, yes.
Just one other point. We have a very small white population at this time.
That's correct.
Is it about 7%, 5%?
There about, yes. Yeah, we're, we're not at snapshots, so, but yes, that's, that's where we've been training.
So when we're looking at the district, we're really looking for our African-American and our Hispanic students area, what do I say, that most of what we're looking at.
Right, Hispanic, and I, I don't want to, don't quote me on this, but it's roundabout 40, 40, 42%, and then African-American is just below that.
Yeah, I do have a question.
Perfect.
Just help me understand, back on the previous page for the MAP, grades three through eight. So, starting at grade three, for example, we have beginning-of-year 2019, 2020. We don't have an end-of-year for that group. We go into the 2020, 2021 end-of-year without a beginning, and then we move on to the 2021 beginning-of-year. So is that third grade, I know you said it's not a cohort, but is, are we comparing apples to apples? Because this third-grade group in this first column would effectively be the fourth-grade group in the last.
That's correct. You need to follow it horizontally down.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and this is, this is abnormal. So to, to your point, you know, 1920, we closed shop, and MAP did not have an online administration for home. And the same was true when we came to the fall. And so that, I mean, we were just reacting to the, to where we are as we go forward. So in history, we do have a BOY, MOY, and EOI, and, you know, God willing, that's, that's how it will continue. Okay, so now we're going, same look, but now the subject is math. As I mentioned in the very beginning, we do M-Class and Adele for K2 reading. So that is why the, the equivalent of that in math, it, we actually go Kinder to eight in math, for math. So the years of administration are the same, with 1920 BOY, 2021 EOI, and 2122 BOY. And to Ms. Gray, to your point, it is the horizontal lines again. Again, they're, they're not, it's not a cohort, a pure cohort, but it is how they matriculate through the system. So as Dr. Watson kind of revealed earlier, our math results are not of the same bounce-back that we saw in reading.
So, a complaint that I have heard while out in the community is, I think, may, might help account for why there's more loss here. And it's that we teach a new math, and we're not teaching it the way I learned it when I was in school. And I was a math teacher when I taught, and I heard that criticism, and I pretty much taught it the way I learned it as a child. And so, I just, I think that might account for, while we did not have the kids in our buildings, I, I think it's harder for parents to fill that gap in math than it is to fill that gap in reading. And so, maybe that means some sort of workshops or deeper explanation of the math, because I don't think we should go back to teaching math the way it was taught when I was in school. I don't think that's the answer. I think for the type of understanding of math that we need kids to have for all the computing and the sorts of things we need to do with science, they need to learn this deeper understanding of math. But I think in a situation where we don't have them in the building, we're going to regret, you know, revert to the sort of the mean in terms of the skills the kids get. And then, when they came back and got, they were even more separated from this, this new math that we're teaching.
And your, and your, your comment is reflective of what the principal said, that new math is, is, it's not a problem, but it is impacting. It's also, parents tend to feel a little more comfortable with reading than math, especially as you're getting into the higher grade levels. And then, just speaking as an example for personal, personal reasons, like if I skipped Algebra II one day, I was lost for at least two weeks until I, I gained back the skill that I lost on the day they taught that. No, we're not that hot, in that high level of math, but they do, the skills do build upon each other like that.
And Mr. Adams, I want to put in a plug right here. Our sessions with our parents, our focus is on empowering the parents. And so, our FACE team is doing what we call Academic Family Nights. Our first one this year was on the 23rd in the evening. It was face-to-face out at our Family Engagement Center. We were packed, and the main focus was Eureka Math. Working through with our parents, everything is online, so they do have access to it. But it was really a partnership between our Curriculum Department and our FACE Department to be able to walk the parents through, because it is, you know, new math per se. And the parents want to be able to reinforce what we're teaching in the classroom. So we did that, that night. Our next one is coming up this coming month. And then, I have to say at our packed meeting that we just had the Advisory Committee to the Superintendent, that was the same thing that they were asking for, right? Because we do have new math, but this new system, Eureka Math in the elementary and Carnegie and the middle school, it is having the opportunity to not only work with our students and our teachers, but also with the parents so that they can help through, through that work. So really excited at, at having the resources available, but it is a new look. So working with it right now.
So I have a question, and apologies if I'm backing you up, but it's a dumb question, but on slide seven, I, I'd just like to understand, we're comparing the beginning of the year 1920 and the beginning of the year 2122. Why are we comparing 2021 end-of-year results to those?
So for, the reason that we put the 2021 is because that was a, an assessment where we had the most participation, and we didn't have, and forgive me, I don't, I don't remember exactly when you walked in, but we don't, we didn't have a BOY in 2021. So we wanted to be able to provide a, a time and, time and data for you.
Understood.
That would be the most relevant to the conversations. As you'll see, as a precursor, we actually do, we do a cohort comparison of this EOI data to the BOY. And so, you'll see the relevancy probably more in just a few minutes, a couple slides from now.
And then, on slide eight, I guess you just kind of answered the question I had for that one. So these are all. So these are all BOIs with the exception. Do these reflect the same numbers that we see on slide seven?
So the slide, yes, it's from the same tests, yes. But we're looking at it by, here, we're looking at it by grade level, and the bar graphs, we look at it by, it's all the grade levels together, the ethnicities, and it's different subpopulations.
And so these are reflective of the beginning of the year and the end of the year?
Yes.
And it's the beginning of the year? Or is this beginning and beginning on slide two?
Okay, so for slide seven, this is BOY, and then ELY, and then BOY. And then those, just in the same order that they're listed here, is how they're blue, green, and orange.
I just had a question as well. I was thinking that we were following the colors diagonally as a cohort. But we all know that there's a great deal of mobility in our district, so they really aren't a cohort. It'd be interesting to see how many kids are still there in fourth grade that were there in second grade or whatever.
And we do have, we do have an actual cohort look that's coming up, yes. Yeah. And what's, will be interesting and much more, for me, it gets helpful as a statistician, when we have the BOY, the MOY, and the ELYs, when we have a full year of matriculation and showing, being able to show growth. That's where we get a lot of value in the data. But as a BOY, you know, you're kind of, you're at the new, you're at the new year, new students, new administration. So I think you'll find that we'll have some more of those robust cohorts and growth measures as we go forward.
Really going to like 5% slide that we're seeing really, BOY to BOY compared to 1920.
That's correct. And I should say that for the math, for the math table, we had English and Spanish combined because the Spanish test takers are smaller and just to ensure that we confidentiality as we were putting it together. But what we have here is the math MAP grades K through eight by subpopulations, same subpopulations. And it's the same tests that we just looked at with the BOY for 1920, the ELY for 2021, and then again, the BOY for 2122.
5% is not good, but.
Differently than what you saw in reading, where we kind of were staying just about the same, maybe a little bit of loss. You're seeing a stair step loss across the board with the same gaps that occur between the subpopulations. So the slide that you probably didn't know you're waiting for. So this is the cohort look that, this is a true cohort, this is not just following, following groups year to year. These are actual students who took the ELY assessment in 2021 compared to the BOY in 2122. So for us, this is essentially the summer look, like what happened at the, in the spring, and now where are they in the fall? The dark orange is the ELY from last year for reading. And then the lighter orange is the BOY for this school year. And following that same pattern, the dark blue is the ELY for last year. And the light blue is the BOY for this year. We have it by the different subpopulations.
So this is by cohort. This means, as I look at this bar graph for African Americans, the dark orange, ninth graders taking the algebra ELY. And the light orange is 10th graders, those same ninth graders now elevated to 10th graders taking the algebra ELY. Do I have that right?
So the example that you're giving, so it's K through nine. So there are no 10th graders taking a math, but if they.
I'm sorry.
So, yes, to, I think what you're, where you're going with this. So yes, where they were last year, any grade level for the grades that we tested in math, and any grade level that we tested reading the year prior and then the year now. And to your specific question, if they did take Algebra I, that would have been this year's BOY. Because we have never done Algebra I prior to this year.
I got you. I didn't see that it was math, so.
So what we saw playing out is the reading, just like it did at the grade levels, we are, we see growth. And we attribute that, again, to summer school being part of it and having the structured, crimsy curriculum. And then also to call about all the points that people have made, that the reading can be supported at home, and actually, if the child is already reading, can actually grow themselves if they are reading enough at home. The opposite we're seeing in math with the declines in most subpopulations.
Have we considered any opportunities for some kind of tutorial or something for new math for parents?
Yes, absolutely. So our very first parent session was on the math because we knew this was happening already. And of course recursive, right, so that we can continue to offer since we know this is, you know, the area of concern. So yes, absolutely. Ms. Carroll in our FACE department, our executive director, is working very closely with our curriculum team to make sure that we're providing these sessions for our parents.
Thank you. Dr. Nalhose, is there anything on those parent sessions, is there anything being tracked at even a student level, the value from the parents coming in and learning? And is there any increase on those students, or are we just kind of offering as a service to kind of help?
So that's a good question, and I was just looking to see if Ms. Carroll was here. She's at the Education Foundation meeting, texted me, she said she's running a little late. One of the things that we're doing this year, and you'll see it in our strategic plan, is that correlation back to the students, exactly what you're doing, what you're asking about. So we've done big sessions and come all, come one, come all, and we'll teach you. But now we are working towards that, you know, the connection between the parent coming and participating. And then is there any impact? Of course, there's going to be lots of variables. Our teachers are doing an amazing job. We are doing during the day accelerated instruction for our students, not waiting for the after school. So there's other factors that we're doing during the day. Our teachers are really emphasizing this. But we want to see if there's any correlation. So attendance, as you know, you know, we ask for the parent's name, but also the student's name so that we can go back and track and see if there's an impact, if there's anything different.
Not just tracking, but even strategically inviting them to participate for those that needed, and maybe even recording. I know probably after about fourth grade, I don't think I could help her with her math anymore. But if I had, you know, a little video to share, said this is how it's done, I would have been able to, you know, help facilitate that.
My observation, so I have kids, or had kids at all three levels, right? So I had elementary, middle school, and high school for a time. And it's actually not my high school kid that I can't help, right? It's the littles are learning mathematics fundamentally different from the way I learned it. Once they get into algebra, I'm fine, right? But it's the basic, like long division, and yeah, the way they, the way they're doing that is very different from the way I learned it. So that, I think if we can focus our efforts on parents, almost relearning, right, like, you know, number line, all that stuff. That's where we'll get the most bang for our buck, I think.
You know, so many of us were taught very abstractly, you know, just write the numbers, line them up, divide, you know, we had all of that. And so, exactly. And what, you know, our curriculum, our Eureka Math, Carnegie ST Math, it's making sure that we start with the concrete, working with the concrete, and then moving through to the abstract. And even for our teachers, it's, you know, it's difficult because it's very easy to just tell them, line them up, add it or subtract, and you're done. So it is, you know, a different way for all of us to reorient ourselves. And what happens going from that concrete to the abstract actually strengthens the students, as you know, for the high schools, right? It takes that away. We're also with our curriculum department and our assistant superintendents working with our principals and our teachers to make sure that they have those exemplars to understand what a teacher should be looking for. And so it is, and I think just so many of us have the fear of math, like I can't do math. And sometimes we tell ourselves that, and even our kids are now hearing us, and there's a lot to overcome. I have to say that even at the state level, the huge decline was in math. You know, it went from like 50% at or above grade level to like 35% at or above grade level. So what we're seeing here in spring is, you know, statewide, it's how we respond that's going to make the difference for our kiddos now.
Are we able to see, or is there data for the state to see where we compare with the state?
I'm not exactly sure on the map, but we do have that comparison for the state level to see how they did the decline. I know I was, you know, just kind of refreshing my memory on the presentation the commissioner made not too long ago and looking at their, at the STAR results at the state level. And 2019 being at 50%, and then at or above grade level. Of course, then COVID, we didn't test in 2020, but in 2021, at the state level, at or above grade level, it was 35%. MAP, I'm sure there's some sort of comparison because it's not done district wide, it's a screener that we've selected to do. But the STAR performance, we definitely can compare.
And to answer your question regarding MAP, it is reflective of what's happening at the national level. Because it's, MAP is done, it's a national test. All right. So moving to the next slide, so this is MAP High School for English I, English II, and Algebra I. This is a little bit different look because this is looking at course specific rather than grade level testing. This was piloted at the high schools this year for the first time. And the results for us have looked pretty relative to STAR performance, where the highest are the highest and the lowest are the lowest. We spent quite a bit of time yesterday with the principals unpacking MAP, and they're really learning the reporting abilities of it. One thing that I'll, example I'll give you is they were showing the learning continuum, which is essentially in MAP, it shows the teaks that are lined. And it had it by student where they fell, strengths and weaknesses. And then it also, which is even more helpful, I think, for high school, they showed the prerequisites teaks from seventh and fifth grade that a student may be missing. And so that helps the teacher focus and reflect on where, what are the gaps in this student's learning? And how can they possibly address that? And this, I think we're going to find this in high school to be very helpful. Because, you know, as they're, so Algebra I, they're ninth graders, there's been a lot of years of learning. And it takes quite a bit to figure out where the gaps and the holes in the instruction or in their understanding are. And this will be a good tool for them to start with from going forward. And so for this look, this is just, each column is a different test. We don't have anything to compare it to other than the other campuses to themselves because we've only had one administration.
And Dr. Cobb, I thought that any student who's taking Algebra I in high school is not one of the advanced math students because they take it in eighth grade, right?
Yes, so the Algebra I kids, they would be considered, yes, they're not advanced or regular, or they're on grade level. Yeah.
Dr. Cobb, you mentioned unpacking that with principals. Are there opportunities for teachers to unpack the MAP data, or is there support for data analysis?
Yes, so we, there will be additional training. So we've, we've given that training to the principals and to their associates. And then they will also have the student support services positions. They'll be receiving training, and then we also really, where we pushing the most is actually with our RTI. Because that's usually who needs that kind of data to address, to address gaps. And we also have a district staff person that is available for training whenever requested.
So I'm wondering with the classroom teachers themselves, are they able to look at their data and know what they're looking at?
Yeah, there's a teacher report available, there's a teacher administrator every level you can imagine report. There's even a student level report that they can see themselves where they stand.
And to, to talk about when the teachers will be doing this, this is during their PLC. We have our date, what we call our data PLCs. So this data is now, you know, just went to our principals, our principals are being trained. So now it will go to the department. So for example, in high school, the Algebra I team will be able to sit down and analyze this data by students. The same thing happens, you know, in elementary and middle school. For high school, this is our very first year having this data. And I would have to say, our principals, our teachers are very excited to now be able to have something to be able to understand where our students are coming from and what their gaps are. And it's specifically the great thing, as Dr. Cobb said, it specifically points out the gaps, the skills that are missing. And we're now realizing that some of these ninth graders in Algebra I are missing skills that were taught in seventh grade. Now we can diagnose and then go straight and do that just in time intervention to be able to keep moving.
What are the.
Oh, I just was wondering why the early college kids were taking a different math assessment? And are there any, I mean, what's the relative rigor between?
The main reason is that most of the students have already taken Algebra I in eighth grade. And so that was a principal decision to do the, to do the K-12 assessment. She did, however, once she did the math K-12 assessment, it goes all the way up. She went back and did algebra for some students as it made sense, as she found, you know, some of the kids, even though they are early college, they did come, come in with some gaps.
So this math K-12 assessment is more rigorous than the Algebra I?
It just goes up more levels. Algebra I tends to be more, it's, it's more course specific. Where the K-12 is, you know, the gamut of the skills that you, that you need. One thing that this also has, all three of these assessments have, again, it has the STAR predictability. I don't know if we've talked, I can't remember, I don't think we've talked about that. When we have the MOY, just in general for all MAP, but including this for the EOCs, once they take the MOY, there's a STAR predictability assessment. And for our analysis, it's about 95% accurate of whether they'll be, did not pass approaches, meets, or masters. So that's very helpful for the high schools as well because there's not really a tool out there for them to have that. And then for the K-12, going back more to your specific question, all of them also have college readiness and actually SAT predictiveness to it. As being college readiness, of being college ready. So that's, as we get, I guess, more experienced with this and get more, just kind of have our experience behind it, it's, I think it's really going to be a very helpful tool because kind of diagnosing, especially students as they're getting college ready. High school in itself is kind of a gap in understanding where the gaps are. There's not all these tools and screeners and instruments like there is in elementary to really decipher where a child is.
I just want to be sure I understand what's going on with this other assessment. So. High school math, I guess the trajectory is algebra, geometry, Algebra II is what I taught. And then.
Calc or calculus?
Calculus, okay. So this assessment assesses. Calculus. Okay, so this assessment assesses whether a kid can solve a calculus problem. And if they can't, that's okay because to do so would be above grade level. Do I have that right?
Yes, essentially, yeah, yeah. And it, and it's really, some of this, I think, especially for the K twelve, it's more about the skill sets needed rather than, you know, a true calculus two question being thrown at you.
So you said that the teachers have an opportunity in their P L Cs to review the data. But what is the expectation of the guidelines that we give them and how to respond to that data?
Let me, can you come up and talk about how we use the MAP assessment with the teachers and the P L Cs? That we've been doing for the past several years?
Let me hear that one more time.
Just kind of share how we use the MAP data. The question was, how do teachers get to see their data? How do they use the what happens next?
Absolutely.
Talk about how we use that.
Absolutely. So first of all, there is a very specific teacher report. There's grade breakdown. It enables the teachers to see what level the students are on, whether or not they're very below, just below, on level, above, or very high above. There's actually five components to the different levels. The other thing that the data does for them is it allows them to see where the specific skills are that the students have gaps. Another wonderful component is it groups the students for them. So if I have these five students with the exact same skill gaps, it's going to group them, identify the skill gap, and then they can go into their resources determined how to reteach. The other process, oh, I could talk forever. The other process is that we have data-driven action planning that all of our principals, assistant principals, and associate principals have been trained on. And in this process, it takes them through what is the standard that the student is, is currently has a misconception about? What does the student need to know about the standard? What do they need to show when working problems align to that standard? And then based on that, what is the misconception? Once they stamp the misconception, they plan reteach. And today, we, we did lessons with our assistant principals and associate principals on how to do effective modeling or guided discourse. So the, the foundation of what to do is in place. And now as assistant superintendents, we get the fun of watching it be implemented.
Thank you. That's exciting. Yeah, and I think about when you have a, I love that it groups them for them. But how, how often do you think we have teachers faced with four and five different groupings?
Every day.
And how overwhelmed are they in where we see that more prevalent in certain classrooms? Are there additional resources and support to help them with that reteach? Does it reteach them, but they have to?
Right. I think, I think you, you are very tuned to those challenges. First of all, there are multiple levels. Trying to do that work on your own is what would be challenging. And so in our acceleration blocks, you're not only having maybe just to work with your level. There are times that we will group the students to where, I know this is my homeroom, but I'm going to pull this group of kids, even though they're not just my students, to work on these skills. While another teacher pulls another group of kids working on those skills. So it helps with that opportunity to homogeneously group based on needs. That, that's one solution. The other solution is during just small group instruction, setting up rotations. And so in those rotations, you can group your, cluster your students, and then a little fifteen minutes here while this group is working independently or on some software, because we do have amazing technology to support that aligns with MAP. And then this one could work on independent and then rotating. So we, we try to give them some autonomy, but also some options. I think the biggest thing for our teachers right now is knowing that they've got instructional leaders that support them. They're not out there having to plan it by themselves. They're not out there having to pull all the data by themselves. They've got support systems in place. We heard a little bit about our R T I specialist. We've heard about our curriculum specialist. We've also got our E S R teachers and our coaches that are on campus and on-site to support. And that's critical because they do need that. I'm not going to say holding hands, but kind of right now, there's challenges.
Yeah, because as we look at budget and opportunities for, where, you know, we may need to focus for additional resources or just, you know, want to make sure we have line of sight to that, and if there's a need, that we're able to provide that need.
Yeah, I would, I would remind you all that when we did the budget, you all did just that. You all gave them the one position they got to choose, and then we added four more, or three, three or four more interventions. They got two for reading and two for MAP to help out in addition to that. So they, they were able to get additional positions to work with this on a campus that you all gave them in the budget.
When it comes to those acceleration blocks, is that every grade level, every campus? What does that look like?
Yes, ma'am. Every grade level, every campus, all the way through high school.
Okay. Is it a, I just want to clarify how it works. So is it third grade? Everybody at nine o'clock, we're all doing intervention groups at that time, is that?
So in the elementaries, that is correct. They have their specific blocks. It's a forty-five-minute acceleration block. And that is at a different time so that those extra staff members can push in and support third grade from nine to ten, fourth grade from ten to eleven, for example. In secondary, it is a kind of stop everything and accelerate time. So it depends, Twin Creeks, for example, that's going to be fourth period. Spring Leadership Academy, second period. So theirs is a little bit different, but then they are all pushing in at that time to support.
Thank you. Thank you, Michelle.
I didn't know what that meant.
They've heard from you, you're going to stay. Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and move on. So we have the same, again, same three tests. This is not a B O Y, B O Y, E O Y, B O Y. It's actually English one in blue, English two in green, and then Algebra one in orange. For us, an interesting observation was the performance in Algebra one for sped and left, although lower, relative to the English classes, it's, it is higher. So we are now going to leave MAP, and we're going to go to CIRCLE. So as a reminder, CIRCLE is our assessment for our pre-K students. And they assess in language and literacy, mathematics, and social emotional learning. So now that we all have it in our head that it is, there was a B O Y, E O Y, B O Y, now we have just B O Ys. We were able to administer the B O Y in twenty twenty-one. Please keep in mind that for the most part, our pre-K students were in a virtual setting. So you can imagine how, how this went with a virtual setting with a four-year-old who had been in school for one month or a couple of weeks at that point, and the teacher administering the, the, the circle test. Just kind of get your visualization for that. Also, because we have been looking at groups as they matriculate, keep in mind that these are three different classes of pre-K or three different years of pre-K. So these are not looking at student, the same students over time. It's just our pre-K kids in nineteen twenty, pre-K kids in twenty twenty-one, and pre-K students in twenty-one, twenty-two. So CIRCLE does not have an overall language arts or reading score. They have the skills set that you see there on the, the left-hand side. However, there is an overall MAP that you see towards the bottom and an overall S E L. So I will stop talking for a minute and give you just the, to review.
So this is our baseline. It may be this is a premature question. What's the schedule for M O Y and E O Y?
January for M O Y, May for E O Y.
Thank you.
Can you share when it talks about social and emotional learning, what, what are students assessed on? Or what does that look like for pre-K?
Yeah, the, the, the questions are more about, and, and honestly, this is not, that, that's not my strength in, in questions. But we can get you the, the topic and the items, but it does-
Skills or?
Yeah, it's, it's social skills. It's, it's, you know, getting along with others, being thoughtful, those, but in a pre-K kind of, kind of setting.
I can say that the tests are very age-appropriate. So it's what should a four-year-old come in with? So very basics.
Yeah. And as you'll see with the scores, and that's probably one reason why you're asking the question, they're very high. And they do remain high throughout the year. One thing to, to say about CIRCLE that is different than MAP testing and even in class, CIRCLE's test is based on their age and month. So it's actually age-based. So if you have, for example, a, a September child born in September, so they're, they're actually just turning five, their, their levels are slightly different than a child that may be a June baby from, you know, nine months later. So just keeping in mind, so they're, what is on track or what is considered a skill varies just slightly based on their age. Because, you know, and, think of it almost like when, when you first had a child and the growth that's expected or the skills that they're expected to acquire with the pediatrician, they're looking at different things at different ages. They're not expecting the same thing from a child that's nine months different.
And social emotional is focusing on positive social behaviors, classroom, community, and safety, emotional and behavior regulation, self-care, attention, and approaches to learning.
Thank you.
So for us, our observation for this class of twenty-one, twenty-two is that they're coming in with lower skill sets than our students in previous years. I mean, talking to principals, you can think about, there may be lack of a formal daycare system or any, maybe a Head Start program or any kind of more formalized educational experience. And that may be reflective in what we're seeing here.
It was interesting when the principals were mentioning that yesterday because we know what happened during the pandemic. But, you know, a lot of the daycares were closed. And so for some of the kids that might have gotten that early jump in daycare that stayed home with their parents, we're seeing that when they were coming in this year for pre-K.
We, we also had that program where we were sending educators into communities, into, into homes. And, and so I, I wonder whether that's sort of being reflected here, too, that those kids haven't had access to that. And, and I, it would be interesting to see if we have data that shows a correlation. Looking at, for example, the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty year where it was ninety-four percent on track, how many of those kids were able to take advantage of that program? Like, is some-
No, our Smart Start program changed as well during the pandemic. We were sending people to their homes to do that.
Right.
And so, but there could be evidence, you know, looking at which kids in the previous cohort weren't able to, were able to participate, how well they did as compared to this past year when we didn't have them going into the homes.
Right.
Can you share more about what the Smart Start program looking?
Yes, so that's also a program through our face department. And we have home instructors, and they go into the home. Now, this past year, we did remote for those families that allowed us to do that. But they normally, so they return back to in-person, going into the home. And they work with the parents, teaching the two-year-old, three-year-old, you know, doing a read aloud. And so the parent has to be present. And so we're doing the read aloud. We're teaching the parent how to do the read aloud. We may be doing colors, shapes, and sounds, and the parent is there. So at the time, we're teaching the little one, we're also teaching the parent. So we step away and the parent can continue teaching their child. But it is for three-year-olds that live in our district. And we recruit through, you know, the, the current students that are here. We try to get family members to give them an, an early start.
That sounds like an awesome program. Thank you.
So these are English results. And so we're going to take the same look, but now it's Spanish. And you'll see again that there is a decline in some, in some areas. It's, it's more evident than it was in the English. And I should note that the strategic plan priority is for all of these areas to reach ninety percent. Because pre-K students learn so rapidly and quickly, we have been able to reach that every year. So we, the principals were positive in assuring us that between the full-day pre-K and all the kids being present, now in-person, that they, they had, they felt like this was a reachable goal for them.
Just to clarify, all the students that were assessed with Circle are full-day pre-K? Okay.
In, that is a good question. In previous years, they, last year, there was full-day pre-K, although many pre-K students did not participate in pre-K in general. But in, three years ago, that would have been a mixed, in nineteen twenty, that would have been a mixed bag. That's a good, good observation. Now with this one, I'm going to give you some time to marinate on it. We have a lot of bar graphs here. It's the same sub-population data. And I do have a chart of the actual data behind it, if you'd like. If you'd like that. It's not in your pocket. I have it here with me. But once you take, just take a minute and look at the literacy components that are embedded in circle by the sub-populations. And just to make sure that the graph, you can read it, the blue is the B O Y from nineteen twenty, B O Y in orange for twenty twenty-one, and B O Y twenty-one, twenty-two, and the lighter blue.
So I, I, I was never, I always taught secondary in math. So I think I understand what letter-sound correspondence is and how you would assess that. Can you talk about how you assess rapid letter naming and rapid vocabulary naming?
I'm going to defer to Ms. Mendoza for that one.
Yeah, so when we're looking at rapid letter naming, it's really the letters on, on the screen on the page, and they have to name the letter. So it's rapidly saying the name of the letter. Yes. So I'm sorry, rapid vocabulary naming, yes, like words that they, that are common, sight words that they just have to know and be able to name rapidly, rapid vocabulary names.
I just want to comment, a positive trend with early writing skills being above reading is typically not the case. So this is a good, you know, just a good, a good baseline where we are.
So why Ms. Mendoza has been speaking, I'm going to go ahead and ask her if she, you can do some explanations of your thoughts about phonological awareness and the decline that we were seeing here.
So when we think about phonological awareness, there's this large continuum. It's really students having the ability to hear the sounds of spoken language, segment them, manipulate them, kind of move them around. And so that is a critical, what is called a foundational skill for reading. And then what they do is, the discussion is that we map the sounds of spoken language to letter-sound correspondence. So if you can hear the sounds of spoken language, push the sounds, let's say, push the sounds of spoken language, and then it connects, what they say, map to the sounds, the letter. And so that's the piece that we're really focused on. And, you know, you've seen that the state is really focused on the science of reading and those foundational skills. And so now that we have, our curriculum has some very specific lessons in there designed to support this area of phonological awareness. And we're very focused on it as well. But there's a very tight connection between hearing and understanding the sounds of spoken language and that connection to letter-sound correspondence.
So Winfer talking about um not knowing the new math that they're doing now. I'm beginning to say, is this the old phonics? Teaching phonics? You're calling it a new name, but it sounds like the old phonics to me. They changing everything on us, Winfer, they changing the math, they changing the reading, teaching reading.
Thinking back to the old Jack and Jill readers that I had as a kid, and cat and hat and-
The blue book, the red book. And we moved through-
It's the same example when they had cat and they just changed the C to a B, bat, R to the rat, yeah, so you dated yourself, but yes.
I I do have a question, um, on the early, the early writing skills, you know, the percentages are really high. But how does that category kind of correlate to um the rapid letter naming and even some of the let, well, more of the rapid letter naming, because the rapid letter naming is much lower. And so what types of skills are we talking about with, or writing skills with pre-Ks?
So when we think about writing and early writing, if students are able to draw a picture and then being able to have a discussion about what they've drawn, those are like the early precursors. Also, we think about um if they're able to write a letter that starts with the word that they're thinking about on on to um the paper, then those are like the early pieces, can, do you hear the first sound of a word, can you write that? And sometimes you'll see a stream of what looks like just letters. But each one of those letters for those younger students represents a whole word, and so they're reading in that way. So those are just the beginning pieces, so can they draw what they're discussing, so we see lots of that. And then initial letters on the paper or on screen that represent those words, those early writings.
It's the nice things we like to see when we go to pre-K, where you see their writing on the board and on the wall. And sometimes it may be, like she said, a picture, but the assessment is looking at, are they able to write from, uh, do they know to go from left to right? Whereas the other one is time, they have sixty seconds to be able to rapidly say the letters or the words, and so it's time, it's a lot more pressure, but they can take their time and write on the on the writing assessment.
I'm gonna go ahead and move on, so just briefly, we also have the same breakdown, but now for the overall math and the and the social emotional learning. For us, what we saw was that the um sub-populations had kind of the same decline, even though these are not the same students. But we are seeing lower um scores than we have previously. Um, interestingly, though, the sped has a higher number, and that that piqued our interest as well. And for our principals, we had um conversations about gaps being smaller in the younger grades and and identifying um that those gaps, when when found, um are easier to close when the students are younger.
So for all of this data, I I can remember when there was a debate about the efficacy of pre-K in Texas. And so for all of this data, it would think behoove us to keep track of these kids so that when they hit third grade, and they're talking about reading scores of these kids that got an opportunity to do full-day pre-K, we have some some solid data to talk about the value of doing this for all kids.
So back in a uh previous life, um, I was in a district that had full full-day pre-K in two thousand. And so I I was actually there long enough to track them all the way to the twelfth grade, and the scores of the students that attended pre-K um were higher than those that didn't. It it has a, there are a lot of other mitigating impacts and um variables in there, however, there was a line that continued because of that pre-K.
I've been in a room where folks attempted to argue that pre-K was some sort of indoctrination, that there was no data that showed a difference between reading scores for third graders of kids who had done pre-K and hadn't done pre-K. And I'd like to just once and for all put that to 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 rest.
I'm happy to replicate that data, and um as we have pre-K now for i- in a non-pen, well, we're in the pandemic, but everybody's back. Uh, we can definitely do that analysis again and as they matriculate up, and you'll see an impact. And then finally, uh, with the social emotional learning, as we talked about, it is a higher um higher ratings. Um, and Dr. Watson, thank you for um pulling up what the components of the social emotional learning are. Um, however, I will note that they are, even though they're high, they're still lower than they have been in previous years. Um, going back to that conversation about um daycares being closed, um different kind of um learning settings that they had prior to um the first year of formal education that they're having now. So with that, we're gonna go to the last assessment, um and this is beginning of year, and it's M-class and Adele. I still don't know if I'm pronouncing that right, but that's Adele, see? So reading and early literacy results, so as a reminder, um, the students, um, for, this is for K-two in reading. Um, the math assessment was handled by MAP earlier. So because this is our first year, first administration, we really only have this um one year to give to give you here, what you'll see in the blue is the B O Y for reading uh for kindergarten, grade one and grade two. And then um for the Spanish, you have it uh for the same grade levels. Um, they were, the numbers are in the percentages here are correct, um, they are flipped. Um, one, one, uh, the English assessments have a lower on a above-grade level, and the Spanish have a much higher um result. Um, in talking to the um principals yesterday, um, their conversation was really about the structure of the test, um, that it was completely different and something they hadn't seen before, but because it's completely aligned to our curriculum and Amplify, um, they will, they have um no doubts that the students will accelerate in this test very rapidly because it is kind of reflective of the curriculum that they're learning day in and day out. And that is, um, that's one reason why we chose um these two assessments as our required screener for K-two. Um, also, the reason for the change was the um um T P R I T house light was no longer an approved screener. So uh, we needed to make the change to be compliant with the state, but it also fell in line very well with our curriculum um being aligned to Amplify.
Dr. H, or Mark, I'm not sure which one, but we had a conversation, I think in Cabinet, uh regarding this as well, and you talked a little bit about the special, the supports that we provide our our students, our our English learners, our emergent bilingual students.
So, um, yes, uh, one of the things that Dr. Cobb was mentioning and why this one is so important with the supports we're able to provide our students is the direct connection to our curriculum, our Amplify curriculum, and so you heard Ms. Starr talk a little bit about um the RTI and the interventions that are needed. This M-class assessment um correlates and groups the students by the needs and the gaps, and then it is directly linked to the Amplify um curriculum that will um give the teachers the lessons. And then as we talked about, the supports that are being provided, either through our um, every campus has a um uh, we call them an S S S, right, a student support specialist that's on the campus that helps pull this data, helps the teachers group this data. Then we have interventionist, every elementary and middle school have four interventionists, two for math and two for reading. Of course, the schools are able to, you know, make the adjustments based on their needs, and so we're able to group the students um and provide that direct instruction based on the data that we are um pulling from this M-class using the curriculum. Um, Ms. Starr also mentioned, you know, that we have other resources that are available. You'll remember, we call it that rainbow chart, um, we specifically listed out not only the materials that are being used for first-time instruction, but also what are the materials that are being used during small group, um, during the 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 reading lesson? And then what are those materials that we use when it's now during the RTI period, which is, you know, tier two or tier three? We have it mapped out, um, even to the resources that we've outlined for special education. So as a teacher, depending on where the students are at, we know exactly what resources we're gonna pull and then know exactly who's gonna push in or pull out the small groups as needed.
Add anything else, Ms. Starr?
No, got it.
So for our last slide, we're just to continue with the um the pattern, um, we have, again, the the special population breakdown.
I'm sorry, can we go back?
Sure.
I have a couple of questions.
Certainly.
Um, so this assessment, this um um M-class Adele, this is only administered to K through second-grade students?
Yes, and it's just in reading.
It's just what?
Reading, the subject of reading.
Are we administer, so uh uh we do have a two-way dual-language program. Do those kids take this assessment? And by those kids, I mean, the native Spanish speakers are taking this in the non-native Spanish speakers in our two-way dual, they are taking this assessment?
Yes.
Okay.
They're taking in the language of instruction, yes.
In Spanish and in English?
Yes.
Excellent, thank you.
I told them you were gonna ask that question.
We were prepared for that one.
Mr. Adams, you're gonna have to come visit, yeah. No, we'd love for you to come visit either, you know, here, our School for International Studies at BAML. Uh, we have the program pre-K through second, uh, third grade, and you'll see these little ones, and then, of course, up at Northgate, that is also all the way to third grade. Um, I know, we know that's a special interest, so maybe one day you can- I was just gonna say, we are hurting our feelings, you're going to A-Lip and you're not coming to our program.
All right. So to conclude, um, this is again is the, looking at the um, at the B O Y in blue, that is the M-class and green being the Adele um in green. And it was on the previous slide, I did not mention it, that our goal is for um our students to reach ninety percent. Again, the principals felt since it was so aligned to the curriculum that that was an attainable goal. It's any remaining questions that you have?
Now that we have all of this data, the teachers have the data, and able to dissect it, know what they need to do with their students. At what point do the teachers have the opportunity to speak to the parents and tell the parents what their child needs? So do we still have the parent, teacher, professional day? That especially elementary and maybe middle school, but especially elementary, they can come to?
Yeah, we do, you wanna talk about the um parent day, and then also the parent reports that this gives parents?
Absolutely, so part of the supervisory expectations, and you'll remember this from last year when we shared with you our cycle one data and the interventions and the follow-through, and we stepped out what the expectation was for the assistant suits, for the principals, for the teachers, and even the students and the parents. And part of that is that communication. There are amazing parent reports that we produce that allows the parents not only to see where the area of concern is or where the area of opportunity for growth is, but some things that they can do. We we had a conversation at the principals' meeting that parents know letters, parents know sounds, these are things that they can do. And right now, we have a huge push to bring as many volunteers into our schools as possible because we need our parents supporting us, we've always said it takes the village, right? And that is truly the case, so now that the data is here, the teachers are getting an opportunity to dissect it and really determine the level of need by each student, next step is that communication with those parents so that we can bring them on board and get that extra support, and I know Trinity Carol right now with our um exactly, the long title, parent volunteers, she is, she is pushing on that to support us as well.
So how often would the parents be getting the reports, or how how much communication would be happening between the parents and the teachers?
So our cycle that we have set up right now, and it it varies by grade levels, so when you look at third grade and up, our cycle is right now, so this is gonna be by October first was their completion of their first data, and by October eighth is the dig into data, the actual dive into data, and then action plans are starting October eleventh, so that's cycle one, so parents are gonna start hearing about their their child's progress to date with that. We have then our checkpoint that comes up at the end of October with a cycle two, so they're gonna get another conversation going into it. It's kind of almost every three to six weeks that you're gonna see this constant report so that they can see where their student is. In our K-one and two, that's gonna be monthly. Because we've gotta stay in contact with our with our parents every month on those data reports.
One question about the M-class, so looking at the K through two data, it looks like the majority of students are below grade level, so that's the majority of kids on two, tier two and three. So I know we talked about the interventionist, but with teachers, M-class being aligned to Amplify, Amplify being new, I know it provides reports, it provides small group materials, but how is that being monitored and what's the plan for progress monitoring?
So two components that I wanna talk about is that they are below grade level with this initial assessment, but we also see great opportunities for growth. So they are still pushing that solid core instruction, first instruction has to be the foundation, and then they are pulling back, looking at isolated skills to grow the students in those targeted areas. The other thing that we found is that some of the students, you you might be below grade level, but you could be just on the cusp, you know, right, right there, ready to to move forward, and so we're hoping with our level literacy interventionist in primary, who's focusing on especially our first and second, that extra support can help to push those identified students, it's very s- detailed in that they're working with a a ratio of one to four, and approximately thirty students within that one period day, so that helps them to reach more students and very strategic about what their needs are. The M-class does break it down into skill sets, and I don't have the five skill sets with me right now, but that's how they're grouping them based on their needs. What was the second question?
No, it was just, the question is, how are we ensuring that we, I have the report, it tells me my small groups, how are we ensuring that that's um being monitored and the progress from the small groups are monitored?
So one of the things at our level, I can tell you that we did, and I just, I specified a moment ago that they had to complete testing by October first, they had to have their data report to us by the eighth, and then by the eleventh are the teacher action plans, we get those action plans, so we're able to see who are the small groups, when are the interventions, when's the acceleration block, and who's working with them? That helps us to see it, and then during our walks and the principals' walks and the coaches' walks, we should see that in action. Part of our supervisory expectations for D-DOC training today was for us to be able to go into the PLC rooms and see the no-show talk charts, to be able to see the videos of them doing the actual data-driven action planning, and then as we walk classrooms, to see those small groups in actually live, happening.
So can you also talk a little bit about the meetings that we have, like we just had this past week, Monday, where we have the principals come in and share, and they present to the entire Cabinet and the assistant suit? Talk a little bit about that process as well.
Absolutely, so one of the components is ownership and accountability, and our principals prepared their data presentation for the Cabinet members to present on the state of the school, where they were, where they currently are, and their action plans and next steps to support very specifically the reading and literacy and the mathematics. And the MAP data and their M-class data and their um circle data were included in that, as well as this very first campus-based assessment that they created and completed, didn't create, I apologize, it's from the modules from Eureka and Carnegie and from- Didn't create, I apologize. It's from the modules from Eureka and Carnegie and from the Amplify unit assessments.
Thank you.
And it was so popular that not only did our lower performing schools do it, but now all of our schools get to do it.
Now, this might be a loaded question, but what do we do if this doesn't work? And we don't see any improvement in the grade levels? What, what are we, then what do we do?
No, that is not a loaded question. That is a perfect question. There have been so many times in the past that we've been reactive and we're waiting until after the assessments. And those assessments tend to be beginning, middle, and end. And we've learned that that does not work, especially after a pandemic. And that's why we've set up our supervisory expectations on this is when testing must be completed. This is when action plans must be completed so that we are driving the work. And now it's not waiting, we're looking at October to see if what we've done so far worked. If it didn't work, then it's all hands on deck to reassess, readjust, determine where the gaps are, practice what we do with our, uh, teachers, with our principals, and do data-driven action planning and gap analysis. Because we've got to stop it and correct it now if it's not working. And since the cycle's happening pretty much every month, we plan to catch it before we get to middle of the year.
Okay, so this is October. We'll do a mid-year, um, in January, you said. So is it possible for us to see some data between? So we'll have data before the end of year. So we'll probably have data again, I guess, in February or March, early March?
Actually, you're going to have data probably in November. And so part of our cycle is you'll be getting some, um, some of our district assessments that we're giving in the middle of the BOY and the MOY. We're going to bring back some data, let you see how they're progressing, um, throughout the year. So it's not a wait until the middle or the end.
Okay, all right, thank you. Thank you for the information.
Good information, and I think we've put some really good things in place with the interventionist, the additional positions that we, we gave. But what still is kind of worrying me is the impact, not just COVID, we have a teacher shortage, um, you know, and I, and I have a lot of confidence that you pivot where you need to. But I, I'm just really concerned about, do we have the numbers we need to support all the work that needs to happen? And how, how are we going to accommodate for staffing shortages and?
Yes, I would say, no, we don't have all that we need. But what we need isn't out there, we're trying to find it. We have interventionists, some of our interventionists are actually teaching classes because of the teacher shortage. And, but if you gave us more money to go find interventionists, you can't find them.
Right.
Because everybody wants interventionists and everyone wants teachers. I think some of the best things that we're doing is meeting with our teachers. We had a, um, a big meeting, I had my, um, teacher advisory meeting yesterday, listening to them, listening to what their needs are. We talked with them about our North Star goal, and is it doable? And surprisingly, they were like, it is doable. They want support, um, they want to make sure we keep this curriculum, they like it. They know that it's required them to dive in and go deeper in it. But everyone is real about where we are, not just from the data, but from the standpoint of we're still in a pandemic, people are still getting sick, sick, we have gaps. We have buildings that are busting out of the seams, that we had miraculous growth in them, and they're trying to find teachers to fill the new positions. And so, um, I think they were at a very sober place, but a very hopeful and faithful place. And they know that, you know, if we need to, we've sent, we've been sending, uh, Dr. H's team has been going in, subbing every day. Our curriculum people, they're going into the buildings, um, actually teaching courses, they're splitting it up and switching so they can teach courses. We have principals that are actually teaching a section or going in, and, and so everybody is having all hands on deck because we're the place for that.
All hands on deck and we're trying to get tools in the hand of parents. I mean, is there, is there any other things that we could be doing and that the board can support?
I think the feedback you gave, um, around a more, a continued or a more structured approach to families. I mean, I think the point was made tonight, we've talked about it, there are certain things that parents know. They can do flashcards. If we cut out the flashcards, we give them the flashcards or saying words. There are some more structured things, especially at the lower grades, we can help, um, get some help from parents to do. But, you know, we are going to be looking at more incentives to go around different places where we don't recruit, trying to find teachers. We do need more teachers.
Yeah.
Um, and so, um, you know, I know we're on the line, but if, you know, we're going to grow them and we're going to develop them, and if we need to, we're going to steal them. We want the best teachers for the kids.
I just worry about where we are, you know? All the, you know, unavoidable, you know, factors that are impacting all our hard work and plans and, you know?
I think one thing the principal said yesterday that was kind of resounding for all of us is now we know where we are. There's a lot of guestimating, estimating in this past year, and, and this is the first like layer of, okay, this is where, this is our truth. And so you can go from there.
Well, I just like, uh, I believe when I'm speaking for my peers is that as we have to pivot through unexpected occurrences that are happening right now, we stand ready and prepared to support it in any way, you know, that we can.
To kind of follow along those lines, and I, I, I sound like a broken record because I ask this question a lot, but I've never asked you guys because I haven't seen you yet, so. So I'll ask you. You know, we talk about all the assessments and we talk about all the data and, and I, I just want to make sure that we're not forgetting that there's a child behind each of these data points. And, you know, to, to your point, you know, the stressing with the teachers and the environment that we're in, what are we doing to support the social emotional piece? Because we all know we're short of counselors, there's not enough people to go around. What are we doing at the student level to make sure that, and this is the phrase that I always say, that we're not assessing our kids to death?
Well, I think that's, um, really critical to be aware of. And I think that, um, one of the things that we recognize is that there is, um, an importance to understand that while students are coming back to school, um, and having these level of needs, our staff are as well. Um, and recognizing those shortages and the impact that it's having on us as a team. And recognizing that we have to have strategies in place, like our spring cares plan, that really supports the overall initiatives of ensuring that our, um, teachers, our staff are, um, not only implementing the support that students need, but they are recognizing self-care supports for themselves as well. That's something that the, uh, counseling and, uh, mental health department really is spearheading and leading, ensuring that our counselors are able to go in and provide that direct support. Um, as teachers and staff are, are providing, oh, I'm sorry.
You're on.
Okay, um, as teachers and, and staff are expressing the need to ensure that they get that extra level of, uh, support that is needed to address those social emotional needs. We have curriculum, um, that we are using, um, and I believe Dr. Collins is going to share some more information about that.
Good evening, everyone. Um, just to piggyback on what, uh, Dr. Edwards was stating. Yes, we do have an SEL curriculum, our social emotional learning curriculum that we use district-wide for our elementary campuses, we're using Quaver SEL. It's very, um, outlined, very prescribed, where it's on a month by, a week by week basis and a month by month basis, where it's aligned to the castle competencies, and it's also aligned to, as she referred to, is our spring cares. And that's something, um, that was developed through our counseling and mental health department. And care stands for is connect, acknowledge, respond, empower, and support our students. And this is something that we're implementing district-wide. Again, not only with our students, but our staff as well, because we know district-wide, we all need that support and we all need that social emotional learning, right? Or the social emotional support, rather. And so how better to serve our students with our staff being in a, in a healthy place? And then providing the skills and resiliency for our students to be able to be successful. Because we all know that if our social emotional is not where it needs to be, our academics is going to suffer, and we don't want that to happen with our students. And so for our secondary, which is our, uh, middle school and our high school, we're using seven mindsets. Again, has the same, um, prescribed lessons for all of our students. Um, it's on a week basis and a month basis aligned to our spring cares.
So how is that being monitored?
So I can monitor it by the dish, uh, from the district office. And so what is happening is that it's been implemented throughout our classrooms. Our counselors are providing that additional support. And any referrals that any teacher see necessary, deemed necessary, that, um, students may need additional support, they're referring those to the counselors, the counselors are meeting individually or in groups with those students.
So I guess my question is more of, I guess my comment. So that's taking more of a reactive approach when situations come up. But what are we doing on the front end? That's maybe something that's integrated in the, the, the class or, you know, things to help support the social emotional learning, but from a preventive side versus a reactive side?
So the social emotional learning lessons are the preventive side. Because that's that, that first line of defense in recognizing there are any concerns of students. So we're also, we're building that resilience, um, and kind of meeting those needs of the students before it gets to the, to the point to where it is a, a social concern, emotional concern, or mental health concern. And then of course, absolutely, it is reactive once, um, we see those students at that next tier that need those additional supports. We do have, uh, mental health behavior specialists to provide, um, tier-two resources and mental health, uh, coordinators as, uh, along with myself, um, to provide tier-three interventions for our students. And, um, we are providing counseling, trainings for our counselors. Our counselors just completed emotional backpack training. And with emotional backpack, what they're doing, they're, um, they will go back to their campuses and train the staff on how to recognize signs and symptoms, um, that students may be suffering some type of emotional or social emotional concerns or mental health concerns with the students. Also, again, we want to instill in that resiliency and it's, um, I guess, how can I say this? We don't want it to be a reactive approach, but we do recognize that that is going to be some of the, um, results of our students coming back in a pandemic that have suffered, um, that, um, adverse childhood experiences, just from grief and loss and any other, um, traumatic events that they may have experienced.
Thank you.
I, I guess what I haven't heard or experienced is, and where we may have an opportunity is, is whether the social emotional curriculum that you described, if we have a, an opportunity for parents to engage, and in the spirit of all hands on deck, amongst my three kids, our discussions about school, there's never discussion of what's happening during social emotional learning. And so if we could share that curriculum with parents and get that being reinforced by parents and in our community, I think we'd get more bang for our buck.
Absolutely. Both curriculums do have a, um, a parent component. Um, they also focus on equity as well in a Spanish-speaking component as well. So, um, that is definitely something that we are pushing through with our Twenty First Century, as well as working out something with, um, Trinity Carol and the parent engagement to where, um, parents will have access to the curriculum.
You mentioned SEL supports for the adults as well. What type of, um, supports are in place for teachers and staff, school leaders?
So we offer youth mental health first aid and adult mental health first aid training as, and, um, we have, uh, different, we, in, anytime we have a, a, uh, a staff member that's in a situation where there may be some mental health concerns, we, we provide, uh, on-the-spot counseling, we provide services, we provide resources and referrals for them. And we also provide our employee assistance program. And with that, our staff members are able to receive a certain number of counseling sessions. And it's just not counseling, there are other services EAP provides. But we do, um, offer the counseling services, they're EAP. Uh, one of the other things that we're going to begin to implement, like I said, I have a mental health intervention coordinator starting in, in a few weeks. And so, um, with that position, it's going to be a lot of focus on making sure that our staff members are, and have a safe place to talk. So we're going to have, start setting up, um, counseling, I guess, kind of safe rooms on the campuses for teachers. Maybe in the teacher lounge or somewhere where they'll have someone to come and talk to. Because one of the things that we found in the past was that, uh, when we did it virtually and we had those rooms, uh, virtual rooms, no one really felt comfortable coming in front of everyone. So we wanted to make sure there was a com- comfortable and confidential place and space for our staff members to come and talk about their concerns and their problems and know that it's not going to go beyond the walls in which they're sharing that with that individual.
Thank you. I'd love to hear the impact of those rooms and feedback from, from the adult teachers as well.
That was what, one of my question was, are we able to get any mental health data soon? Like, I know we have a, you know, a robust program, I'm just curious to know. And we've talked about this before, how we were, we're supporting the students and the staff. I, I'd just like to see some numbers, if we can get some soon.
You said some mental health data?
Yeah, the numbers on, on how we're assisting students and staff.
Yes, I should be able to provide those numbers here.
I appreciate the work we're doing. I first heard of, uh, mental health, health first aid in this room, and it was in a, a program a few years ago that we were offering to the broader community. And so I, 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 I know we're doing it, um, providing that training for our staff. And I, I, I think I heard you say for our students as well. I, and I know, I feel like during this meeting, we put a lot of work on Trinity Carol. But like, to the extent that we could offer some sort of community outreach in terms of mental health first aid training, I, I think it's something the community needs.
We, we do have dates, uh, assigned for this. We've already had, I believe, one session. Um, we did move the location, we initially had a teach-up for the first session. And so we did move it to, um, our parent engagement center.
So one last thing, um, and this is kind of along the lines of, uh, what Kelly was asking. And this is also more of an education for me, um, when it comes to ACE scores. Have we considered doing some sort of, um, study or get some data on, on ACE scores for children? I know typically, um, do you, do, when it comes to ACE scores, do you do that for just certain children? Or is that something that we've looked at, we could possibly look at for doing all the kids, considering everyone's coming out of this pandemic and kids that before wouldn't have qualified and might actually fall into those categories now?
Um, that is not something that necessarily has been done for all students. But it's definitely something we can, um, consider and just work out a plan of how we can, um, implement that district-wide.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming up, and we did not properly introduce you. So if you will, please share with us your name, position, and welcome.
Thank you so much. I am Crystal Collins, Director of Therapy and Counseling.
I knew that she was new to the district, so thank you.
One year next month.
One year? We just haven't seen you.
And Dr. Edwards, how long have you been here?
I began eight, August eighteenth, so a little over thirty school days.
Okay.
Got some new faces. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thanks, Dr. Collins. Always excellent job in bringing us our data.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Collins. As we, as we move to our next point, our next item is, uh, recognizing our chief financial officer, Ann Westbrook. But Ms. Westbrook, I'd like to ask you, I noticed in the audience that we have, uh, Yolanda Humphries with us, and I noticed that her presentation is farther in the back. Do you mind if we move her to the front now at this time first?
Yes, ma'am, that would be excellent. So we have an, our item that involves Ms. Humphrey, it's on page one twenty-eight, and it's a bid offer for a tax resale, and I see Ms. Humphries already at the podium. Introduce the board to this item for us this evening, Ms. Humphrey.
Uh, yes, this is a, we've received a private offer for, uh, resale property. So on this particular property, um, we took a judgment in two thousand sixteen. It was set for sale and there were no bidders at the original sale, so the property was stuck off to the district. And so the district has held it in trust for itself and all the other tax and jurisdictions. And so the district has held it in trust for itself and all the other taxing jurisdictions that were part of the judgment since that time. This is the only property that you actually have in trust because pretty much people come in and they pay to cancel the sale because they don't want to lose their property. Or if something is set for sale, it's usually selling. So you don't have a large inventory. It's just this particular property. And so this right here, it's, the offer is for the full amount of the judgment plus post judgment taxes. So it covers everything. And because it's the full amount of the judgment, you're able to approve the offer without contacting or getting any consent from the other taxing jurisdictions. And I, the last time we did this, the board had asked what the, the bidder planned to do with the property. So I anticipating possibly getting that question again, I did contact them. They're not sure. So it's vacant property and they're just holding on to it right now. And they don't have any plans right now of what to do with it.
Where is it, Duna?
I did bring a map. I am horrible with directions, so I gave it to the
And she, she overestimated my ability to read maps as well. I can pass it along to you if that may be helpful. I noticed that there's also tax money owed to Harris County as well as Spring ISD. And that because it didn't sell, that there's all kinds of extra fees attached. So I just wondered how in the world this person down in sugar land got interested in this property? But lucky us, I guess.
Yeah, the, the purchasers, they come from everywhere. I mean, even the, the first Tuesday of every month is when the properties are initially offered for sale and it's packed. And so they come from different counties. Some may even come from different states. So the value on this property, I believe, is eighty one thousand. And so they're pretty much close to full value for the property as well. So their, the total amount that they're paying is seventy one thousand, three hundred and fifty eight dollars and seventeen cents. And the value is eighty one thousand, seven forty four.
Were there any additional questions for Ms. Humphrey regarding this item? No? Okay. We are asking to have this item on the consent agenda for Tuesday. If there are no concerns regarding that, then we'll, we'll move it forward and place it on, on the item. And we do have some map readers. Yes, ma'am.
I would like to place it next week, but please give us a little more description of where this is. Cause I'm looking and saying, is this crossing forty five? Is it where, is it North Gate crossing up there? Just where? So.
All, all I have is the HCAD map because actually if you look on the account for HCAD, it doesn't even have an address.
If Mr. Miranda can figure that out for us. I just, I asked because they said they didn't know what they were going to do with it. Sometimes it's, you know, where it's located and the size of it and can kind of get a sense of what it could potentially be used for. I was trying to take a guess of what it might could be used for when I asked where it was.
Thank you, Ms. Westbrook. Ms. Humphries, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Give him an opportunity to review it. Maybe he'll give us, he's better with maps than I am.
Thank you, Ms. Humphries.
In the meantime, we will continue. Thank you.
Oh, you want to unchair me in it? Okay.
So I, I believe Mr. Miranda and I found it. He's going to share his screen real quick on Google Earth. And it appears to be a sliver of property that crosses over Hardy or under Hardy, I guess. Since we would open the land and not the air.
Zoom in, you see the red dot on there. Hard to see, but this is, this is a Hardy Toll Road. Only can hear, and so I have forty five that's here. This right here is ninety nine. So it's, it's, if you're for reference, kind of where I'm swirling, it's exactly that. It's North Gate Crossing. And so the strip of property is roughly, you can see my cursor in this area.
I think it's going to be crossing the Hardy Toll Road.
Oh, it's actually right. It's going to be that
Is there a railroad there?
So it's kind of a It's north of ninety nine. So this is ninety nine here. So it's north of ninety nine. So it's from where my cursor is, all the way down to this red dot. And again, to the, to the left of this is to the left of this is, well now I've lost it. Where's North Gate Crossing?
Looks like there might be
North Gate Crossing is here.
Yes.
So down the Hardy Toll Road and then up.
Doesn't that look like there was a detention area?
That's an easement. It might be, let's see. I think that's a utility easement there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miranda. Your map skills. President of the House of Bureau Cal, move forward with the next item. Yes, ma'am. So this evening, we wanted to take some time to discuss student-based budgeting. And as Dr. Watson mentioned earlier, this was a conversation that came up a little earlier in the month. And it's a very timely discussion based upon the equity study work that was done this past year and was presented to the board. And subsequently, the newly formed ad hoc committee that is working to create budget recommendations that are aligned with the findings of the equity study. And so the student-based budgeting proposal, our plan, is a type of budgeting that we feel would complement the work that is planned to be a part of the ad hoc committee. And again, to try and align the budget with that equity study and the expenditures that go along with some of the recommendations that were a part of that. So start here with what is student-based budgeting? And of course, it's a funding system where the dollars follow the students based on the student needs. And what's unique about it is that it allocates dollars as opposed to staff and materials and resources. And it's based on a number that is created based on the student characteristics and it's given a weight. So for example, our students that are English language learners, they would have a specific weight. And it would provide more funding and more resources to our campuses.
Am I reading this correctly? Are the poverty students getting, I'm sorry, is it time for questions?
It's always time for questions.
I'm, I'm, I'm probably reading this wrong. Poverty students are weighted at two hundred and twelve dollars. Is that like, that's per student? Explain.
So the information that you were provided is very high level details about what student-based budgeting is and how it has been implemented in districts across the United States. But no numbers, no data analysis as far as what the weights will be for Spring ISD. We haven't even begun that. We're at the discussion phase right now. So, but we would do a data analysis to create what the, the number would be for Spring ISD.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Kelly, I interpreted that as extra on page thirty seven, that all students got four thousand, two hundred and twen- two hundred and fifty dollars piece. But if it was a student in poverty, an extra two hundred and twelve.
Right. That's how it could work.
And below proficient, it's an extra four hundred and twenty five. Yolanda, yes.
Right. And we'll have an example a little later that may help with just the methodology of how it works. Yes, ma'am. Trying to click to the, there we go. So the student-based budgeting has, it's built on three pillars. And of course, the first one is equity. And that's that the dollars follow the students and the resources are given equitably based upon the, the unique needs of that particular student. So to your point, Ms. Hodges, if it were a student that were considered a poverty student, economically disadvantaged student, then that student would have a particular weight that would generate X amount of funding so that resources could be allocated to those students for their, their specific needs. The next is transparency and that it's a formula where it's easy to understand. And principals, central office, everyone would know exactly how much is being allocated to the campus based on their individual students' needs. And there's an opportunity to create the budget based upon stakeholder input at the campus level as well as at the, at the central office level. But it would be adaptable for the needs that change from year to year for, for the, the campus. And the last thing is flexibility. So what would be very different for the campuses would be that the principals would own their own budgets and that they would distribute the funds based upon the needs of their individual campus as opposed to receiving staff. And so that's one of the areas where we do have some opportunity with the way that we, we distribute our funds. It's because we do, in a traditional model, which you'll see in just a moment, allocate based upon staff as opposed to just allocating funds and then allowing the principals to make those decisions. And so there's an opportunity for student-based budgeting to help with driving student achievement. And so student-based budgeting in and of itself, of course, is not going to be just that slam dunk that takes us to the next level. But it is absolutely one tool. That's a part of a larger strategic plan that can help to boost our student achievement.
Ms. Westbrook, I just wanted to comment, when I was reading through this, it seemed to me that we're already going in this direction, have been with the zero-based budgeting. And that the state of Texas gives us a certain amount of money for students. And I know that that doesn't cover the costs, especially in the special ed area. But you know, the state of Texas is already giving different amounts of money for different kinds of students. The other thing is, is I understand that the principals of schools that are very, very successful in their instruction have more leeway than the principals who are heading up a school that really needs to reimagine what they're doing and how they're doing it. So it, it, isn't that correct? That you're really kind of already going this?
Yeah, one of the things when we heard you all talking about it, when Winford mentioned it, there's a lot of components of this that we're not at ground zero. But there's definitely opportunities, especially by need, but it's also training. So it's not just saying, here's a new, here's the funding and go. Some of us have worked in a system that has a more student-based type of budget and it's a lot of work for the principals. So we're talking about all the things that they're doing, trying to really determine what staff they need, what resources they need. And paying for that, it's, it's more than a notion. And so it would be some additional work, but we are by no means at ground zero. Yeah, I think I mentioned at that meeting that when I was with KIP, they was, it was an MBA program offered at Rice for school leaders. This was a big part of what was going on was training principals to understand fiscal management of a, a, a large budget on their campus. And not every principal in all of our buildings right now is prepared to do this. It will take some significant training for them to be able to do this. Cause it's, it's something else on their plate for them to do that the, the administration, the central administration has been doing for them.
Can, can you share with me where this aligns with the equity audit? Is it under section four point one five? The fiscal resources or?
Yeah.
Is that it?
Yes, ma'am. And how we tie our dollars to addressing those specific needs of our students to make sure that the dollars are allocated equitably. And they're truly following the students based on their needs.
Okay, I was getting coffee. I'm sorry. Are we recommending this in lieu of or in addition to?
We're not recommending it at all.
Right.
This is just research. We're just learning together. This is, we just, this is research we're providing you all. So we all start up at the baseline. And then you all have, have gotten a committee together with Winford leading. He's going to be working with the two of you all with Ann and I and, and Ronda. And we're going to come back and just learn. So we're not recommending this at all. We're just learning together.
Thank you for discussing.
And may I also say that I've never seen such a transparent reporting of our finances as what you put out, Ms. Westbrook. You have the full one and then you have the user-friendly one. And I love that user-friendly one.
Yes, it has become very popular and everyone's like, yes, we see all the detail, but where's the, the popular report? Yes, ma'am. Thank you for that. Okay, so here's an example that just takes a look at the difference between the traditional school budgeting, which is what about probably ninety nine percent of school districts do is the traditional budgeting approach versus the student-based budgeting approach, which has become very popular as of late. And it's, and there's lots of research, as you can tell from the data that was shared with you from ERS. Lots of research on the student-based budgeting model. And so this is here where I think, Ms. Hodges, you can see kind of how the funds would be allocated slightly different. So each June, our human resources team and financial services team come to and bring to you what's called the staffing guidelines. And that's approved alongside the budget. And so the staffing guideline says, in elementary campus, you get twenty two to one. You get your number of teachers based on that ratio. You get an assistant principal. Middle school, twenty eight to one, et cetera, et cetera. So that's the traditional budgeting. We're saying you get X number of teachers, X number of assistant principals, and here's your other staff. Then we take the per student allocation for the number of projected enrollment students that you have at your campus. We multiply that out and we say, here's your pot of non-salary funds. And say at an elementary, it's forty thousand dollars. And then the elementary campus does tell us where they'd like to put those funds, how much in supplies, how much in the library, so on and so forth. So that's how our budget is made. Now, to Dr. Watson's point, we're not at ground zero because there are definitely some funds that are added on top based on allocations. And a great example of that is the English as a second language, the ESL funding. That is, every campus gets eleven hundred dollars times the number of ESL students that they have. And then those dollars are able to be used for staff or for additional resources to support that particular population. The flip side of that is with our state compensatory education dollars, which is for our at-risk students. Those dollars, on the other hand, are really allocated more in terms of staff. Every elementary gets an instructional specialist. Every elementary gets a math coach. So we're not at ground zero, but you can see the difference in how some of the funding is allocated. So we're not at ground zero, but you can see the difference in how some of the funding is allocated. With the student based budgeting model, it's a hundred percent allocated based on the campuses' student population. And then the campus alongside, of course, the school leadership and all of those teams would determine how those funds are used. So in the traditional example, you see forty teachers, three assistant principals. That would likely be based upon the staffing guidelines. But if you look at the student based budgeting, we see in that first, the middle, the middle here, you see that if you have seven hundred and fifty students at your campus, you're going to get, and this is all purely fictional, all examples only. That student would get, that campus would get four thousand two hundred and fifty dollars times those seven hundred and fifty students. So three point eight, three point one eight million. Then if you have four hundred of those students are considered below proficient. So the data that Dr. Cobb just shared with us, those four hundred students would have a weight. And so they would receive an additional four hundred and twenty five dollars for each of those students that are below proficiency. Um, to Ms. Hodges' point with poverty, if of that seven hundred and fifty students, five hundred and fifty of them are considered impoverished or economically disadvantaged, there'd be another weight. And so they would receive funds based on that. And the same with ELL. So with those weighted funds, the total that the campus would have is three point six million dollars. And then the principal and whoever's a part of that core group that gets to decide how those funds are spent would now allocate those dollars out. And so you can see on the far right-hand column, instead of the forty teachers they would have received in the staffing guidelines, they've decided based on their campus needs, and you see the little narratives at the bottom. Those are the principals talking. They chose forty-two classroom teachers instead of forty. Two assistant principals instead of three. And then they use some of the funds to create stipends for teacher leaders throughout their building. And then they got two secretaries instead of one. So they allocated that three point six million dollars specifically based on what they needed at their campus and their campuses' unique needs. And you see the discussion that's going on down here. So for example, they wanted to lower their class size ratio. And so that's why they hired more teachers. And they're doing distributive leadership um, throughout the campus. So they're not needing as many assistant principals because they have teacher leaders and instructional leaders. So they're paying stipends for that. So that's the type of autonomy and difference in how the budget would be allocated based specifically on this school A's needs as opposed to the set staffing guidelines. Does that make sense?
Okay, question. So I know this is fictional, but are, is this criteria, the below proficient, poverty, ELL, is that the criteria that we would use? Or that's, we would create that as well?
We would definitely create it, but this is very much on target. Because you would certainly have something for your economically disadvantaged students, your at-risk students. Um, that ELL population for sure. And of course, you would have some base amount that's just based on your projected enrollment. And absolutely, we could create a component that was based upon your number of students that need additional resources because they're, they're not achieving at the level we need them to be at. So this is a very, very good example. And ours would probably look quite similar. But of course, that would be a decision that would need to be made.
Thank you. Now, one, one other thing, just to be careful as you're developing and thinking about this, especially when you went to the committee, I think it's going to be important, the article doesn't talk about it, but just like I have constraints, um, that you all develop some budget constraints. Because what we wouldn't want to do is for programs that are key to the district to be taken out because we want to focus more on tutoring kids, so we get rid of PVA or we get rid of something different. It would be important that you have some budget constraints. So people won't cancel programs that are enriching, enrichment activities for kids.
So kind of along those lines, um, and I guess this would just be a function of the numbers. But using this example, the very first example here with these allocations, if we have the majority of our students are hitting all of those heavily weighted categories, I'm assuming we would have to put some sort of stop as far as how much funding we could provide for each of the schools, correct?
Absolutely. So the calculation, thank you. The, the calculation would be based upon available funding. So we would see how much of our funding is broken down um, into the at-risk portion, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And then that's how we would back into our, our weighted funding. So by no means would we have unlimited, that would be nice. But it would definitely be within our, our funding constraints.
So Gwen.
I don't know.
So kind of also along those lines, um, you know, I see in the next slide that one of the questions was, is this something we'd want to implement? I, in reading the, the information that we got, uh, it talks about this being a cultural shift for everyone involved. And so given the conditions that we're in right now, would this be something that we might consider piloting at a handful of the campuses? And that kind of follows along with the managed performance and empowerment strategy that was listed out in here.
Yeah, so we're not recommending that we go to this even next year.
No, no, I know.
But it would be something, I think the committee would bring back to you all to say, hey, do we want to pilot this in a few schools? Um, I think that's the beauty of, of getting the, the team together, really think through how this could be a benefit.
Right, we would, we would need to assess which of our principals already have this training. Um, we'd have to figure out a pipeline for getting additional principals this training. And I, I think I read in here that this is at least a year-long progression to transition into this um, properly. But I, I, I like the pilot idea. Again, that's something we'll discuss in the equity committee as we talk about this.
I'm excited about it. I think there needs to be constraints and, you know, I think it gives the principals and us as a district, an opportunity to put our money where it needs to be based on our students' needs. You know, uh, unlike today where we're kind of cookie cutter it through a balance, zeros that base balance budget, this really focuses that campus on their specific needs. And to me, this is something I've been, you know, we've been talking about all along. Uh, so I'm actually kind of excited about it. So.
Yeah, it's.
You're looking for.
Cause I.
A nod from me, you haven't.
I went ahead and looked at the ERS website.
The what?
The ERS website. Um, and they, they have a video that talks about, I mean, about sort of systemically in this country, how that's how we've been doing it and it hasn't been working for everybody. Um, and so this is, we talk about transformational train, change, that's what this is.
And I know the, the times are difficult, but to me, that's the time to make a transformational change.
Do we have an idea of the costs associated to shift from where we are now to a model like this? If, if it is over the course of a year?
So our thought part, it's the same amount of money, right? It's just how we allocate those dollars out. And it's really pulling in everything and determining what do we have available to allocate. That, that's really it. So the cost would be in time of developing the process, developing the plan and all of that. But there's no additional cost that's foreseen, other than maybe some training. We were in a meeting today with some partners that were saying that they have some other clients and it just happens to be Indianapolis, which there's an example in the document about Indianapolis and one of their campuses that they have some experience with this. So it would be an undertaking, but we don't anticipate any additional cost. It would still be within the confines of our budget.
Is ERS still working with districts to implement these?
Yeah.
Cause I saw in the footnote at the back that they had done some work in HISD and they were moving away from it.
They are actually one of the partners with um, TEA. And so we are a part of the system of great schools. And so they're providing us assistance. I know Ms. Westbrook's and the superintendent have the opportunity to go to some of their sessions. So they're a direct advisor um, to the state and then of course to us.
I, uh, I would like to direct everybody to page thirty-six, the third bullet at the top of the page. Using objective and measurable student characteristics as weights for um, your allocation of funds. I think that uh, we have some real opportunity in our district because we have so many schools that we are trying to develop as specialized schools. Whether it's performing arts for Bailey or the uh, STEM uh, courses and strands that they have at Cotton, that kind of thing. So I, I don't think we have to use the same weights and measures for every school. I think that we could have a measure for developing each school specialty. So I, as we go forward, let's just take outside the box here.
I believe, Dr. Watson, have you talked with our newer board members about the change we made when we, what we did before? And then how we moved to the zero base budget and how successful that was? And maybe just a little bit of history would be helpful.
Haven't done that yet, but in my session with them, we are going to go through all that.
Okay, so I see trustee Korea had moved ahead to the discussion questions. So we'll catch up with you there. Don't get the slide too advanced.
Have we had any discussions with our administrators?
So we've had anecdotal, um, you know, every time we've gone through budget staffing, there are, there are a few staff um, principals that have been here for a while who say, my needs, my needs are this. And it's not fair that I only get this when my population is more economically disadvantaged or is a little larger. And so we have those anecdotally. Uh, some principals would prefer you just tell them what they need because they need to focus on, they want to focus on instruction and do the other pieces. And they don't want to handle all of that. But to Winford's point, a lot of places that do this, because of the training and the need, they hire budget managers in the school to do it. So not all the time is it the principal that's doing it. They've hired a, a budget manager position to handle that and to do it. And so it kind of uh, takes away, but I think that's something the committee's going to have to really look at. And I think in the article, it talks about establishing readiness to really see who's ready for this work.
Yeah, cause I was thinking Ms. Westbrook's department would maybe expand a little bit, you know, in getting them ready, so.
Have to be careful because uh, you don't want, end up spending more money for uh, people doing a job at each campus that you could do centrally more efficiently. So I, I just, I'm glad you're taking some time to look at this.
Right, because it's just, to me, it's a matter of um, awareness and education.
Also retention becomes that much more important when you've invested in training these principals to really be more of a CEO than they are because they have those budget responsibilities. It'll make them very attractive to other districts around here.
That's true.
So some of the discussion is happening, happening organically. But the first, the first question was, is this something that we would like to see implemented in spring? Not necessarily next year or the year after that, but is it something we want to begin the process of working towards and developing and setting a timeline for when we could see this as a part of the, the annual budget process?
Saying some nods.
Yes.
I would suggest let the committee take a look at this first and meet and analyze it. And then bring their recommendation back to the board as to what direction we should go in, what we should do. I don't think that's a question we can answer at the moment. I don't think it is.
Yeah, I'm, I'm wanting to schedule, and I needed to talk to you, Rodney, about scheduling the first equity commit, board equity committee meeting in the next few weeks if possible. I know we had something that got canceled, so there might be an opportunity for us to all get together.
Thank you, then I will skip right over the next steps and say that it will be based upon the feedback that we receive from the equity committee. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Westbrook's. Let me ask the board, as we, we will move next to the governance, board governance committee update. But does the board need to take a five to ten minute break first? Yes, okay, let, let's do that. Let's take a five to ten minute break. Uh, eight twenty-seven, we'll come back by eight thirty-seven, eight forty. Thank you, everyone. As we continue tonight, our next item is the board governance committee update. So at this time, I'd like to recognize trustee and governance committee lead, Justine Durant.
Thank you, President Newhouse. Tonight's agenda from your governance committee will start off with um, update from the Tasby delegation assembly and our new legislative priorities. And I'll turn it over to Dr. Jensen.
Howdy. All right, could everybody turn to page fifty-three? And uh, the uh, what we will be doing is discussing our legislative advocacy plan. And the purpose of this is because uh, we have our uh, many, many plans here in spring ISD. But sometimes uh, there are local, state or national laws or people who are, have ideas of what we should be doing in spring ISD. And sometimes we agree and sometimes we don't. So uh, we need to have sometimes uh, uh, prioritize legislative advocacy. I am looking at October where I'm just um, having you select the five to seven priorities that are important to you. And uh, we don't have to do this in a meeting and vote on it. Uh, we'll be going through the governance committee. Right now, we're collecting ideas and what's important to you. Uh, then uh, hopefully in October, November, the governance committee can review what ideas if we have come up with. And then in November, do our uh, first draft of the legislative, latest legislative advocacy priorities. Uh, you notice that as the, the next year goes on, there's ongoing review of these. Cause uh, we sure didn't expect the COVID nineteen pandemic. You know, suddenly that became a high priority when it wasn't on our original list. So we adapt to uh, what's going on around us. Uh, if you could turn to the next page, you see that uh, priorities that we have had this past year. And you see the COVID nineteen pandemic list up there. Uh, if for anybody who's listening who doesn't look at the page I'm looking at, this is on our website, the spring ISD website. You can find uh, the spring ISD board legislative priorities right there. Uh, also, uh, we've been impacted by charter schools. And uh, that um, probably is lower priority right now with some of the other things that are going on. Diversity and cultural awareness. Now, this one ties right in with our um, priority strategies and the equity part. Public school finance, we can't run a school without um, income and uh, the support that we need for different programs. Um, governance is uh, how we are actually um, being legislated. There are um, current bills that have decreed that we need more training in certain areas. Uh, sometimes they decree uh, uh, other things about boards. For instance, we finally got recognized as being uh, public officials who might need to have their, some of their private information remain private. So you know, it, but sometimes when the government steps in, it's not bad. It's, it's good things too. Okay, um, and we've had. Okay, and we've had school board member eligibility. You're not going to get anything done if you don't have a network supporting your priorities. And we could not get the kind of support we needed to really push this. And so anyway, the priorities we had last year, some we may keep and some are going to go away. I have some links for you when you go into your web version of our agenda for tonight and all the materials. I just want to point some of these out. First of all, besides the last year's priorities, the other thing is when I went to the Tasby meeting, I get this book, A Delicate Handbook. And I have this also in electronic copy and you can go onto the Tasby website, those of you who don't have access to the Spring ISD dinners, that you can go and look at the delicate handbook. And it has an advocacy, advocacy agenda. It has cornerstone principles, priorities and that sort of thing. This year, all the recommended resolutions for advocacy at Tasby had some friendly amendments, but they all passed. There were some unfriendly tries at cutting out some of the priorities, but those did not succeed. So there were thirty-four advocacy principles that they were, not principles, but resolutions that they were going on and voting on. We do not want thirty-four priorities in our, I don't want to take the Tasby resolutions as our ours. We want maybe five to seven. Last year, we had six. So what I'm asking you at this point now is look at the last year's priorities. Look at the Tasby ones, you've got a link there. Also, we're going to be getting the new edited and the ones that have been approved advocacy priorities that I can send out to you as soon as I get them. The other thing is, let's be looking at our new strategic key priorities of, for every student, every teacher, every day. See if any of those are going to need some legislative support. On top of that, talk to your community and see if they have some very large concerns. I can tell you before we went in and met with the delegate assembly, I was asking people in our Spring ISD, shall I say, all your employees that, and because sometimes there's some things with finance and why wouldn't I talk to Ms. Westbrooks? If there's something to do with building and maintenance, I wouldn't, why wouldn't I talk to Mr. Miranda? If it's curriculum, why wouldn't I talk to Dr. He knows that it's that kind of thing? And I know that Jeremy is always available to give us a, some education on some of the legal aspects. So anyway, this month of October, try to come up with some priorities that you would like to see for our school district for legislative. We're not talking educational or, you know, we're not talking that. We're talking about how can the government help us be a more successful district? And we'll go from there. Ms. Durant, it's yours.
Thank you very much. And we meet the Thursday before the work session, the governance committee does. And so if you can get those over to the committee, we can take in your recommendations and come forward, come back to you with proposals for our legislative priorities. There's a tack on public education. Some of it's good, some of it's bad, but we want to make sure that we are diligent and active and let, make sure our voices are heard, so. Thank you, Dr. Jensen.
And Dr. Jensen, you want just our top five to seven priorities, right?
It would be really helpful if you, if you could give me one or two, but if you go to twenty or thirty, that's less helpful.
We want to have five to seven as a body. So if you can give me your, you know, give, give Dr. Jensen a couple, we can put together a list for all. Okay, but remember, we're here to support what you all want.
So just to clarify, we're revising these and so we can also bring additional ideas. Okay, just clarifying, thank you.
Those were last year, so.
Right, and I, I also want to thank Ms. Mayneal. She is the alternate delegate and she stayed through the entire meeting. I'd love to hear your impression of the Tasby delegate assembly.
Well, it was interesting to say the least. I was definitely pleased with the amount of equity talk that was brought up. There were a lot of, a lot, you know, many districts represented. With it being my first session, I definitely took pages and pages of notes, but that was one of my main pieces was the equity. There was even talk with passing a resolution to add natural hair into the anti-discrimination language. So that's kind of like a nod to the Crown Act, if you're familiar with that. So I just was really pleasantly surprised with that piece.
I think it's worth noting that amongst the attempts in the legislature this past session were a few bills that would prevent school districts from being members of associations like Tasby so that we could develop legislative priorities. And so that's just, it's, it's sort of covered under this one for governance. But that is, that is a thing that it happens the last few sessions under, under sort of the cover of preventing lobbying by public entities, so.
But they didn't prevail last time, so. Any other comments?
Winford, I understand that the people who are proposing preventing any organism or any entity that collects taxpayer money from using any of that money for lobbyists. They were very shocked at how some of their big supporters were really against the bill. So I, I think that often legislators need information ahead of time before they're presenting these bills. So that's another thing that we're trying to go towards in our governance committee is not only working for our priorities, but to target our local legislators and give them information to, so that they don't have unintended consequences.
Thank you. Our next item is, has to do with some changes regarding BEB loco, which is the board meeting on public participation. And I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Brinkley to provide us with an update on that.
So if you look at your seats, there's a dark blue folder with a copy of BEB local. And tonight I am not bringing you proposed revisions. I'm, I'm bringing you this as a discussion item. So prior to COVID, we had two different public comment sections in the regular board meeting. We have the agenda participation that we have at every board meeting that allows a member of the public to speak on an item that is on the agenda that's required by statute. We also had public participation and that allowed members of the public to come in and speak on any item they wished. It, it was held towards the end of the board meeting. The board cannot respond other than to provide factual information. It's limited to thirty minutes, up to ten participants. That is something that is not required by law. It's something that not all boards do, particularly after the legislation passed requiring what we call agenda participation. And so with COVID and being remote, the board is one, part of one of its resolutions actually suspended the public participation for a period of time. That is currently still suspended, but as we are now back in, you know, in-person meetings with eighty seats in the boardroom, it seemed like a good time to ask the board if you wanted to revise the policy to remove public participation or if you would like to see it back on the agenda or if you would like to keep it suspended for a little bit longer. But that is really a question for the board. It is a topic of discussion for y'all. And I don't, again, I don't have a proposal one way or the other. I just want to make sure that in creating the agenda or revising a policy, we do what the board would like us to do.
And so as the governance committee, we brought it to the body to get a consensus on what direction you'd like to take.
What is the committee's recommendation? Is this what I'm looking at in yellow?
That's just the high, because it's a long policy. The yellow just kind of highlights the main paragraph that talks about public participation. It actually goes on to have all the requirements of signing up and all of those things. But that was just to be able to call your attention to the specific part of the policy that we're kind of looking at.
So what is the committee recommending?
So I, I think as a committee, we were intentional about not making a recommendation. We felt that this was something that the entire board just needed to discuss. I can tell you what I think, and I'm sure Justine and Dr. Jensen can tell you what they think. But like, we really were intentional about, you know, not putting our finger on the scale in this discussion and, and letting everybody sort of speak their piece.
Most boards I've been on and committees, the committee usually comes to the board with the recommendations, so that's why I asked. So having not served, having, I haven't served on a committee with this board as of yet, just recently invited. I wasn't aware of how that process worked, so. You all don't have.
Normal, ninety-nine point nine percent of the time, we do bring you a recommendation. This, we felt that it was something that the body should probably discuss and make the decision together. So we intentionally didn't bring a recommendation at this time. I think it would be, I think we should continue public participation. We do have limitations and requirements around it, not to exceed like thirty minutes. If there's a lot of people for one specific topic, we narrow it down to the number. So there's a policy around how that works. And I, I would, I think we should always have an opportunity to be not just transparent, but for parents to have an opportunity to come and address us. So I would hate to see it that way. I think it should stay. The agenda participation one, I think I'm not in favor of. So that's just my personal opinion. So I'd like to see that one removed, but if you're asking, but that's Justine's opinion. And I don't know if anyone else has any thoughts.
Agenda participation, we're bound by statute.
I'm sorry. I mixed them up. Correct. That's correct.
I say.
So go ahead.
No, I was, I was going to say to Justine's point, I think it would be good to leave that so that we do have the community have the ability to comment on whatever they need to, especially non-agenda items.
Correct.
With limitations.
Right, and, and, and Mr. Brinkley, can you correct me on the agenda participation? We don't have to have it every time. I mean, we only at certain points. So I, I don't think we should have it as often as we had it.
And so just to get us on the same page, because they sound, they sound very similar. It's hard to distinguish them. The agenda participation is the one we have to have anytime we have a substantive item on the agenda. So agenda participation isn't always, and that's what we've been doing. If you want to speak to something on the agenda, you have the option to do that. The public participation is where they, that somebody can come and speak on whatever they wish. As long as they're not, you know, attacking someone personally or it's a, if it's a grievance matter, they need to go the grievance route. But, you know, if somebody wanted to come and speak on, you know, why we should mow the grass more at a certain school, they would have the opportunity to do that. That's what the public participation is. Traditionally, the board has had that at the regular meeting, but not at the work session. And it's not required to be on every meeting. It can, it can be skipped a month if, if the board feels there's a necessity to do that. The agenda participation that we have to have. Now, the board has a limited agenda participation to a certain amount of time. We have not yet had a situation that some boards have had where they have been flooded with community members who just want to come in and spend all night talking on certain topics. And, and, you know, if we, if we got into that scenario, we, we would have some conversations. I would probably have some conversations with the board president about, you know, what we would do to handle that, but I digress. We're, we're required to have the agenda participation.
Okay. So that's got to come back now that we're open.
Yeah, agenda participation, and it's been back on. And, and you've probably heard Ms. Newhouse ask about it at the beginning of the meeting.
Is that the beginning?
Correct.
Okay.
And as he indicated, we did do public participation before the pandemic. We have been doing it. And I think it worked very well for us as a board to let the community see that we were interested in their concerns as well. As you said, we can't address it at that time, but at least we get an opportunity to hear the concerns of the district at that time. So I am in favor of having the public comment session there. Just, we need to abide by our guidelines, no more than thirty minutes. We do not want to be here two hours.
No, and for public participation, we've, we've always held very firm to the guidelines because if we don't, then, you know, we're showing someone preferential, preferential treatment. And so we've always been very strict about the time limit involved, that they sign up within the time window and.
Yeah, yeah, they have to be here so many minutes before the meeting starts, et cetera, et cetera, so. Trustee Adams, you wanted to say something?
I just, well, go ahead and for my two cents, I, I think I agree with Rhonda and Carmen and Justine that we need to allow an outlet for the community to come in and express whatever their sentiment is within, you know, like you said, the guidelines. I, this came up when I was at Board Officers Academy at Tas, at Tasby. And they talked about the importance of, you know, like, if you say it's a minute, it is, it is sixty seconds. It's not sixty-four seconds or fifty-eight seconds because again, you don't want to put the district in a position of sort of advocating for anybody's particular position. So everybody gets treated equal. So they talk about being able to cut the, the mic off, you know, and like being really, having a real sense of equity or no equality, not equity, equality around how everybody gets to present their views. So I am in favor of.
I think we did a good job. We put the, we post the clock up so they could kind of see their minutes as they tick down. And I think we've been very consistent with that. I know in the past, we have had a time where there were thirty people to talk about one topic and we had them get together and elect spokesperson to speak on behalf of all of them. I think the policy says five people per topic or something like that. But I just think we did get a little pushback on that, so I don't know if it's something we want to look at changing, but I think it works well the way it is.
It's, it's really important to be clear in your head about the distinction between public comment and agenda comment.
Agenda comment, right.
You cannot limit agenda commenting the way you can with public commenting, so.
Yeah, and I know some boards that are doing agenda comments multiple times throughout the meeting.
And so we, we certainly have the option with agenda comment. The, the statute does allow us to limit it to a certain amount of time. But of course, if there is, if there is a lot of people who want to speak on a topic, that's where the, the board by vote may vote to extend that time to make sure we, and that's where I would provide some legal guidance in closed session. And then.
We are going to continue to do it just at the beginning of the meeting.
Oh, yeah. So right now, because we don't get overwhelmed with agenda comment, we just do it all upfront, because you have to allow an opportunity to speak on an agenda item prior to the board's consideration of it. So if, if there was an item that we believed would generate a lot of comments, we could deal with some of the more mundane items first and push agenda comment for that specific item to right before the board hears it. So we can get through some of the necessary business that needs to happen, vote on certain things before we get to the topic that may take us the rest of the night.
Okay. So that's, okay. So for agenda participation, I, I, I like that we do it at the beginning, but there maybe needs to be some flexibility when we know there is a topic of interest to perhaps move it on that occasion.
And we have.
That's what you're recommending, right?
Yeah.
But only one time. And then if I hear the consensus from the board, you all are comfortable with keeping public participation. Yep, I'm in favor of that as well.
And I, over the years, have noticed that the, the public participation, sometimes you get people talking to you about some issue none of us seem to be aware of, or coming up with a really great idea that you'd like for the district. So I like that open time. So I support it as well.
And I like how Dr. Watson handles it. He's, we can't respond, but he typically has someone from his cabinet or administration that actually speaks to the individuals before they leave and follows up themselves. It's worked well.
Just as an example, the board president and I both have a special button that cuts off all of your mics, including the podium mic. So we can end their, their comment at the right time. With that, is there any objection to including public participation on Tuesday night's agenda?
Okay, I think we have our direction.
Thank you.
All right. Our final item for tonight is regarding Employee Excellence Award. It has kicked off again for this year, but we have had a minimum amount of participation. So we talked about, you know, how we can promote and spark more participation. I know there's so much going on. Teachers and staff are short-staffed and working really hard. The committee thought it would be a good opportunity to maybe create a promotional video that was, was just a short little video that could go on our rotating banner or something that spoke to the new leadership, but outcome-driven, service-oriented, and relationships-centered, and then show some snapshots for the winners from last year and when we presented it and their excitement. And just put together a short little promotional video that could encourage folks to recommend those shining stars that are going above and beyond. We have a lot of people, like Dr. Watson said, everybody's jumping in to meet the needs right now, and we want to make sure that we're recognizing those folks and that people understand that there's an opportunity to do that. And it's not just staff. I mean, a parent can nominate somebody. And so I think if we put it out on the website and promote it a little bit, we'll see more participation.
Sounds good.
Before we ask that of the district, we wanted to make sure that the body agreed. Any objections? Nope.
We're already working on it.
You're already working on it. Thank you very much. And that's all that the governance committee had for this evening.
Thank you, Governance Committee. Thank you. As we continue tonight, our next item, I'd like to recognize our Executive Chief of District Operations, Mark Miranda.
Thank you, President Newhouse, Dr. Watson, members of the board. If you'd join me on page fifty-five. This is a storm water quality easement between Northwest Harris County Mud Twenty-Three and Spring ISD. You can see on the map here, I'm going to show you a little bit about the location of the, of the easement area. It's actually behind Roberson Middle School. And so when we built Roberson Middle School, we also installed a storm sewer that tied into the existing detention of Mud Twenty-Three. At that time, we actually gave several easements to Mud Twenty-Three to be able to have access to that. The easement contains a control unit for the storm water filtration, and we are needing to expand their easement by a few feet in a couple of different directions so they can have access to that site. And if you can kind of see on the map, just kind of where it's located, it's way off behind Roberson, Roberson, sorry, Middle School, and kind of that northeast of Lewis Elementary, right by the detention pond. We do these every once in a while when we need to have utility districts or others have access to some of the property that we any questions, comments?
Have they ever thought about putting a road down through there between, just being nosy, I guess, between Walters Road and Kirkendall, and not Kirk, Veterans Memorial, right there? I see a lot of clearing going on in that area.
I'm not.
And just out of curiosity, I wondered, are they going to try to put a road through here?
I'm not quite sure which area you're referencing. I can read up the map.
To the side of, of Roberson there, and I guess it would be along that reservoir that you showed us to the side of it there. I guess I'll wait and see.
Yeah, you said.
Where Christmas Tree Lane is.
Christmas Tree Lane.
That's what I'm seeing.
Oh, yeah. So that is really kind of a utility road that goes onto our property around the the detention pond. So all of this property that you see here, the green, is our property. And so that is something that we're going to have to address at some point, whether we have a use for that property or what we're going to want to do with that property. So right now, there is no intention for anything to go through here. I believe that the clearing that you see here is additional homes, if I'm not mistaken, that are, that are planning to potentially be built in the back there.
I'll wait and see.
So this is just an existing easement that's just being extended?
It's an existing easement that needs to be extended by a few feet in a couple of different directions. Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miranda. As we continue tonight, for our next item, I'd like to again recognize our Chief of Innovation and Equity, Dr. Lupita Hennahosa.
Thank you, Ms. Newhouse, members of the board. We're going to be now on page sixty-four. I'm going to have the next few items, and we want to start with some good news. So if you turn to page sixty-four, this past year, it's almost been a year, we submitted a grant application to Harris County Department of Ed, our Education Foundation, and we have actually received the award. It's two grants specifically designed to provide additional technology. And we call these swivel robots, but they're like cameras on iPads to allow for us to be able to videotape. So teachers would use this in their classroom to videotape their lessons. So the award is two grants of ten thousand dollars coming to the district. The focus will be to do work in our middle schools, specifically our lift-six middle schools. And you see them listed here. And again, the ability for us to do the videotaping, teachers will be able to see themselves, be able to provide feedback. Our plan or our assistant superintendent's plans is to do this videotaping to serve in two purposes. One, to be able to create a repository of exemplar lessons that teachers have filmed. And so you'll be seeing other teachers within the district, and also to be able to use with our administrators to calibrate our coaching that we provide to our teachers. So again, it's two grants that are coming to us via the Education Foundation from Harris County Department of Ed for a total of twenty thousand dollars.
Dr. Hennahosa, I always love twenty thousand dollars worth of tech equipment. I was just concerned at the bottom of page sixty-six where it said the, you must complete the project no later than December thirty-first.
I know.
Can you do that quicker turnaround?
Well.
And you applied in January. So, you know, it's not like you didn't give them time.
We get, we applied, and they just notified us. So it's like it took a long, long time. Right now, we're in the process of working with IT. At the time we wrote the grant, we applied for the swivel robots, and, and we actually had elementary schools in the plan. We're working with IT to identify the best cameras to be able to use and the best technology. But I'll tell you, our middle schools are chomping at the bits. We do a lot of our own videotaping using our cell phones. And so the work's already begun, but it's, you know, acquiring the equipment, getting it out to the schools and begin using. So I have been in communication with Harris County Department of Ed saying, we just got the notice. But, but we're on it, or at least our assistant superintendents and our principals are on it. All right. If there's no further questions, we are going to move now to.
Dr. Hennahosa.
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to remind you at this point.
Yes.
That we are all in favor of this. I think we're all excited about it. However, we do not want to include this one with all of the other consent items. If you will pull this one separate, because Mr. Davis works at Harris County Department of Education, so.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for the reminder.
Separate. Mr. Adams, I'm sorry. I'm so sorry.
Yes, yes, ma'am. Thank you. I think Mr. Schaefer, Mr. Binkley have it. Thank you for the reminder. So this will not be in the consent item. We'll get to celebrate one more time on Tuesday. And I'm assuming we got the ninety-day report in? Yes. Yeah, okay. Yes. Okay, thank you. And so then on page seventy-six, I'll make sure I'm keeping up. On page seventy-six, it is also a project that we've been working on here in the district for almost now seven years. And we call this our ASAP program, Achieving Success Alternative Program. ASAP program, yes. And this, I think, so many of you are familiar with this. This specific board agenda item is requesting a waiver from the state, the optional flexible school day waiver, that will allow our students to attend school for four hours a day, and that's their complete day. For us, it's beneficial because we do receive the full day funding. For our students, it's specifically beneficial because we provide alternate times for our students. This year, the most popular time is the first in the day, the seven-thirty to twelve-thirty. All of our students are in that cycle right now. We have a midday and then, of course, an evening day. This program, or the goals of this program are specifically designed to decrease the number of potential dropouts and increase our graduation by offering this flexibility for our students in a non-traditional setting. If you visit this campus, you'll see that many students may be working self-paced on the computer through online resources. You'll see some students huddled up with teachers, working on very specific skills or courses that they have. And so we do both credit recovery and credit acceleration. Again, it's focused at increasing our graduation rate, decreasing our dropouts. And this is the program that we really talk to our students during the success walk that we do throughout the year. And so the request is that the board approve us submitting this waiver once again so that we may continue providing these services for our students.
This is one of the programs that I am most excited about, that benefits our population of students. The success walk this year, we met a young man who had lost a parent with COVID, was working to help take care of his younger siblings with his mom, and he didn't think he could graduate. And when we knocked on the door and had a conversation with him and told him about this program and that he could go during hours when he wasn't working, he broke down and cried all over Dr. Hennahosa's shoulder. And she just informed me lately that he has enrolled and is actually going, he only has, I think, one class left.
But, yeah, and, and what he hasn't, so it's the one class that we've enrolled him in to prepare him for his EOCs. The only thing that's keeping him from graduating was the passing of his EOC exams. And I have to say, Ms. Rogers was here earlier, Stacy Rogers Smith. She did leave. It was getting late because she needed to be at work tomorrow morning at six-thirty. But she is our administrator there, and I'll tell you, all the students that were referred during the success walk, they've done the intake, and Kelvin is that young man. I think we all, you know, really have become attached with him and follow him through the process. I know Ms. Rogers Smith is keeping close eyes on him. So we've got students already enrolled. We have seventy-six students already enrolled in the ASAP program. They're working on their own pace. To date, we already have two, ten students that have met graduation requirements. And so we're well on the way to, you know, meeting our goal. We normally, with the exception of last year, our graduation rate is anywhere from sixty students to fifty-six that go through this program. And they're able to walk with their classmates if they choose to at the end of the year, or they just receive their high school diploma. So very excited about this program.
Dr. Hennahosa, I had a question. I thought this was only a high school program, but on pages eighty-nine following, it goes all the way through elementary.
Yes.
So you have elementary students who also need this program.
We are submitting the application for elementary, middle school, and high school. Here in spring, we've only used it with our high school students, but we're keeping all doors open because the, the program, the waiver actually allows students the opportunity to recover if there's any failure due to attendance. So low attendance rates, the students will qualify, or if they're at risk and they failed several grades, it's a way for acceleration. And so we're going ahead and applying for it, especially during this, you know, this time. So if it's needed, we'll be able to enroll. Elementary, we're really looking at middle school right now, overage middle school students that, you know, are, are, really shouldn't be in middle school any longer. So how can we accelerate them? So we're keeping the door open for all students.
Well, this would be an opportunity for, I recently spoke with a student that's been out multiple times because of exposure to COVID, like three different times, like thirty days. And now they're behind. So this would be an opportunity where they can even get caught up as well.
Yes. So we call that like immediate grade repair.
Okay.
So that we don't wait till the end of the year. And so, yes, the, the beauty of this is the students are still enrolled at their home campus. They'll be attending with us for the four hours every day. So the, yes, that is an opportunity for them.
I have the same question as Dr. Jensen with the elementary. So how is, is it, how are the, is it additional hours? Is it interventions during that time? What does it look like?
So the most important piece of this project is the alternate day, the shorter day. So allowing the student to come to school for four hours a day and being able to give them their accelerated curriculum on a individualized setting, whether it's online or with the teachers in small group. So you may have students that So you may have um, students that either um, can't attend all day long, um, if they qualify, they have to be at risk. Being, you know, retained, high absentee rates, what the state says. They could enroll in this program, attend for four hours a day and make up any lost credit that they have. So if you have an elementary student that is failing because they're not meeting the ninety percent attendance rule, we could have them enroll um, and make up the, the lost time there.
So is it a, is it a different program? Is it different teachers? How does it look different is my question?
So we're not implementing yet.
For elementary at this point?
We have it just in case we ever have to use it for an option, like when we first started with virtual.
Okay.
There was a possibility we could have used it with other districts before the state came out and said you could. We had this option to be able to start doing things with kids and breaking them up in smaller classes or schedules. Um, but we never implemented, so we always applied for everything that we need just in case, so we're not in a situation with to go back and ask. But we've never used the elementary.
If we did, we would have to plan and develop it, okay.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Watson.
I had a question about the success walk. I just realized this is our first um, board meeting since we had the walk. Did, um, one of the two things that came up, by the way, that was a great, um, those, that was my first time attending that. So thank you all for the, did an awesome job. Um, is there any data that we, we have to show the success of the success, success walk per se, like how are we tracking that? Do, and because one of the things that came up in our conversation in the van was the possibility of having people who are student, former students who have um, achieved a certain amount of success from us doing the walk, coming back and going back to school, maybe having them go door-to-door with us, so those are individuals that are kind of closer to their age and their peers, so to say. So, or is it possible to have uh, some data? I'd be interested in knowing how many kids we've really helped with that walk.
We, we do have a data tracker through our um, support services through Thomas Graham. So we're tracking right now a little over um, forty-four or so that we know have come back. And so that would be the group, that would be part of the group that you would look at uh, to be able to help us in the future, to be able to put the word out that, hey, this is something where the example that Dr. Hinosa just gave in terms of someone coming back from uh, you know, to the ASAP program, ASAP program, um, or just back to school in general. So um, the academic completion specialists that we have also continue to track. Um, and they have all the students that were visited and the students that were on the list, whether they didn't come to the door or not. Um, they also follow up with phone calls and visits and have, have a tracker um, on their own for those students that are still having trouble getting back. So we continue to follow up with them um, as we go forward. But I, I really love the idea of having those success stories and then being able to have them actually help out to say, yeah, I was out there, maybe the gentleman we just talked about. Uh, but now I have an opportunity to come back and reengage, so that's really great, uh, great idea.
And I have one more question, going back to the grant and um, my colleague's question about the ninety day report. How are we able to submit a ninety day report if we just got the, but we just received the funding this month?
Yes, so the ninety day report was me, um, meeting with them to let them know we just got it. This is the, right now, what they have is the adjustments that we're doing to the grant.
Okay.
Number one, the change in the schools, no elementary schools will be involved. And number two, the work with IT because um, the Swivel robots may not be supported. And so we're changing, we're looking at other options. So that was our first report to them.
Okay, alright. And so when was the money received exactly?
Um, this, the, in September.
Okay.
And I need to see if it has a date here, but we received the notice in September and this was the first uh, board meeting after we received our notice.
Alright, I didn't see a date on the award letter I was asking. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, so in the um, optional flexible school day waiver, the um,
Can I say something else before you move on? We also talked about how do we better promote and make students aware of the ASAP program? Because all of them were unaware. And so here they're thinking there's no opportunity for them to graduate from high school when there's options. And you know, do we do some kind of a, a mail out or a flyer? Is there some way we can uh, better get that word out to our, to our students?
Yes, and so one of the pieces, you heard Mr. Miranda talk about the academic completion specialist. Uh, Ms. Rogers Smith works directly with them. Um, and the flyer being given out to each one of the students that we've identified as being at risk. Um, if they're already on campus and they're behind in their credits, that they have low attendance rate, that's who we are targeting right now. Because oftentimes they'll start falling off because they see like there's no hope. And then of course, the, all the contacts that we made, they have records of that going back and continuing with those phone calls and or home visits, um, to make them aware of the option, right? You don't have to come to school and sit all day in a classroom or go classroom to classroom. You can do it at your convenience, you know, morning, middle of the day or in the evening. Um, those are the pieces that our students really didn't know, don't know about. And our academic completion specialists are working towards that. And then of course, you know, bringing them over to the ASAP program. We do intake every Friday, so tomorrow will be another day that we do intake. And we, you know, work with the parents too, to support them. And oftentimes the, you know, the student that is the breadwinner, how can we work with those schedules? So that the families understand they can continue to work while coming to school.
How, at what point do we define um, like drop, dropout? Like you said, you identify them at risk. I'm just curious, how many, how many days, weeks, months of non-attendance?
That's, that's a good thing, so being at risk can be different, there's different indicators. Actually, the state has thirteen for us. At the high school specifically, attendance is a, an indicator, a predictor of potentially being um, a dropout. So we look at the missing ten percent of that grading period. And so then they're reported to the counselors and then, you know, we escalate all the way to the academic specialist. So within this grading cycle that just finished, this first nine, nine weeks grading cycle, we are identifying students at risk because they're at dropout. We also um, run reports, um, and that's how we've identified these. Started out with the seniors first that have been in school for four years. But they do not have credits to be on track. And so if we need twenty-four, twenty-six credits to graduate, if they have less than eighteen credits and they've been in school for four years, you know, we've um, identified them and then made contact with them. The same thing with the juniors and if they're off track in, in being ready to graduate within those four years.
Okay, and I'm not gonna leave at this point, but two more questions. So one, there are, the students are identified, which, uh, thinking about uh, Trustee Durant's question. What are we doing at that point to say, okay, here's the program that we have, or, or we, I know we're not waiting until the success walk.
No, 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 this is ongoing. Those reports are, are um, done during the summer. We start during the summer identifying these students. Our first line of defense are the counselors. Um, we run the reports and then share them out with the counselors and highlighting, okay, these are the identified students. Um, as the counselors are scheduling them at the beginning of the year, making sure they are at school because they may be enrolled but not attending, the counselors will bring them in and conference with them. Oftentimes, as we've learned, they don't know about this option. So they're coming in late to school or not coming to school because they're working or they overslept. So the first line of defense is our counselors working with them. They're not responding, our academic completion specialist would be the next line of defense to make those home visits and go out there and meet with them, determine what's going on. Um, and then of course, they'll escalate. We do have truancy officers in the district that can also make those home visits. But our first line of defense is our counselors with the data reporting that we um, give them from um, central office.
Okay, I had another question, but I forgot.
And I know um, Dr. Brown is not here. She's our assistant superintendent of high schools. So we worked with her very closely this summer when she came on board, uh, providing those rosters, identifying them, and then she meeting with the high school leadership teams to make sure, you know, they were working with the identified students.
Okay, and I, I know what my question was, thank you. Uh, the seniors, how are we, how are seniors getting to the senior point and we not know? And we're, and the fact that they don't have enough credits hasn't been identified?
No, they've been identified.
For graduation, for graduation.
Right, and so it's every year that um, our counselors, we, we say audit the their transcripts and they identify the students that are not on track. Oftentimes, the seniors or they were juniors, we invite them to summer school. If they're already failed courses, we make sure that they recover the courses as we go along. It's very hard for a student that's, let's say, failed Algebra I and now is enrolled in geometry to take geometry and Algebra I, right? So they end up putting it off, putting it off. We try to do it during summer school. They come in and we do a lot of credit recovery. But it seems like it starts mounting up for them. So we, you know, identify them, bring them into summer school, the senior, their summer before the senior year. And then we also have credit recovery labs at the campuses where they can go in, we schedule them for a period a day where they can go in and start doing their credit recovery coursework. Um, but oftentimes it just starts backing up on them. And it's how quickly can we identify, we start with our seniors. They're working on the juniors now, sophomores, and of course, any freshman that's off track. We call them off-track students and try to provide the assistance before, you know, it mounts up on them.
Alright, thank you.
But that is the ongoing work that we have to stay on top of with our caseload, our counselors, um, making sure that they stay on top of it.
I think that's the hard part. Um, I think that's why we continue to do the success walk and continue, the counselors continue to call them. When you're listening to the stories of the students that are going to, they know. They just haven't come, some of them are working for their families, so they have all of these things. And they might start working their sophomore year, they start working their junior year. And so they keep getting called every year and for some of them, it gets overwhelming. And so they just stay back because they don't think they can catch up ever. But um, it's not because they're not identified, um, it's trying to get them in. We can identify them in the walk, but if they won't come back, then we have to keep trying over and over.
Are offering, are letting, providing them with intervention uh, or opportunities and what, what we have available to them.
Yeah, we have a variety of things and we've talked about before, like with the mental health of the wraparound services that we can provide. Like during the success walk, all of the teams have a packet of different things that they're able to offer um, to the students and their families if, if they need a computer, if they, if they're having trouble with transportation. Um, even, even to the point where if they're having kind of that mental health issue, there are wraparound services that we do provide, and so we try to be very proactive. The academic completion specialists, that Dr. Hinosa and the counselors, they are well aware of the services that we provide and they're instructed and trained to be able to provide those and offer those to the parents and the students. Um, as, as proactively, I know we were talking about proactive versus reactive earlier, as proactively as possible. One of the other things during the success walk that, that we found is, is every year this happens, we have no shows as well. And so they get on our list too because we're trying to find those students. And some of those students are the students that have left the district that, that aren't coming back. And we find that out oftentimes because we're going to try to find them. The phone numbers don't work, the addresses are empty. We've, we've knocked on doors before where, you know, the, there's nobody in the apartment. It's very clear that, that we don't have a good address for that student. It's just that the families haven't told us that they've relocated. Um, and so all of those different things are coming up during success walk and it's follow-throughs as we go forward.
And I think all of the work that's being done is amazing. I really, I know we've had this conversation before, but I really wanna um, you know, see what our plan is or how we can do a better job with changing the narrative in the community's perspective on, as it relates to Spring ISD. Because all of these things that we're talking about, and unfortunately, the ones that are putting a negative perception out about us in the community are not at the board meetings, they're not watching it on Zoom. So I would like for us to think about what we can do to make sure that we're telling our story and getting this information out there. So when, heaven forbid, we get another, you know, not so favorable grade that we can say, we got this grade, but here are all the things that we're doing, these are the kids that we're impacting. We have to, you know, work to uh, change the narrative and the perception of Spring ISD. So thank you for all that information.
And I, I think the um, so the last time I did the success walk, it was for a young man who was basically the head of his household. He was in an apartment, he was working two jobs, he had two younger brothers that were in the district. And that was before the pandemic. So it's about to get worse. Um, we got kids that have lost a parent or both parents. Um, and the, the, the oldest child in the house is stepping up. Um, and she, these are heroes. Um, but everything we were doing before the pandemic, we're about to have to do a whole bunch more of it. Um, and to Kelly's point, we gotta get the word out. Um, whether that's, you know, reaching out to a reporter to go with us. I know we had somebody out with us the last time. ATRK or somebody was out there with us. Um, but the, the kids get, have to know that they have the options.
Even from a three sixty degree, not just around the graduation walk. I was um, blown away at the parent meeting that we had at the lack of knowledge that a lot of our parents had on what we offer. You know, um, we had someone speak to a certification program and how we needed one that we've already had for, I know, at least ten years, you know? And so it's, it's how do we market or bring awareness? Um, because, you know, awareness is the first step to change, and if we're gonna change that perception, we have to bring about awareness. And um, I know we do a lot of positive things, but it's how do we take it to the next level?
We agree. No, we under, we understand, Mr. Ant, and you know, just like Mr. Adams said, you know, we, we're doing, we were doing all this before the pandemic, now we've gotta ratchet up even more because of what our community is experiencing. So definitely, and I would say, uh, one of the other projects that we have on page ninety-seven, it is a part of our CTE program. It's a partnership with um, Gulf Coast Local Workforce Board. And this is again, a way that we support our students. On page ninety-seven, this partnership, it's a local match for childcare for teen parents. So students in our high schools that are parents, um, were able to provide daycare services. And we have two, this one specifically for the daycare found at Westfield High School. And so children of teen parents are able to um, come here. And so the students are in class, their children are being, you know, well taken care of. We take um, children from um, I don't wanna, eighteen, um, six weeks, they have to be six weeks old. Um, and so the children, the students, we provide transportation for the babies, for the children and our students. Um, the children are, the babies are dropped off at the daycare and then the students move on to their classes. Um, through this partnership, you know, there's a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar local match and we're able to provide. you know, there's a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar local match and we're able to provide teachers, three teachers and a paraprofessional there. And um the funds from um workforce, Gulf Coast uh Workforce Board helps us fund this project. So again, you know, helps prevent the young mother or the young father from dropping out of school um because we provide their daycare here. And so this um recommendation is that um you, the board, approve this local match contribution agreement for the federal federal funds received annually for our childcare services at Westfield High School. Then on page one ten, also a project in our CTE department. On page one ten, it's a um MOU or a partnership with Workforce Solutions. And this is um Workforce Solutions Specialists um coming to Spring ISD High School specifically on page one ten. And they provide not only career um information, but also college readiness. So they provide speakers for our students through the CTE courses. Um they help us organize job fairs. They bring in industry partners um to be able to speak, be um invited lecturers at our high schools as well as provide opportunities for our students to go out to the different industries and our students get, you know, some glimpse into these um different industries. And so um this request is for you to be able to approve this MOU um with Workforce Solutions to continue the partnership and being able to provide these resources to our um three high school, high schools through the CTE um department. And again, this is another effort to, you know, engage our students, give them options, opportunities um for them to stay engaged and and look to future careers. Um so it's a, it's a great, you know, preventative also measure.
I just wanted to clarify, um I noticed it says designated campuses. It's gonna, I'm sorry, page one twelve. Is for all of the high schools?
It is at the three high schools. Um and if, you know, we get the specialists one day a week. Um we also try to uh incorporate our middle schools, um eighth grade, but the partnership is specifically for the three comprehensive high schools. And then the final um item is on page one seventeen. And many of you will recognize this um project also um through our CTE department. This one is a partnership with Texas A and M AgriLife Extension. And we're asking for two um to, we're providing two recommendations to the board. The first one is that the resolution that we have in here um is to acknowledge that four H be considered an extracurricular activity for our students. Um and then the second piece is that we recognize the um instructors as adjunct professors for our students. By doing this, when the students are involved in these four H activities um that oftentimes may be during the day, the students get to be counted present because it is actually a learning opportunity for them with certified professors. Um this directly connects to our pathway agriculture pass pathway in middle school and high school. Um you'll also, some of you may recognize this through our FFA program. And then this um also you'll see them uh participating in our tri-club at the end in the spring semester where we get to showcase the work that they have done our year long, either with um the animals or um with the agriculture, the plants, the horticulture and those pieces.
On the um I'm sorry, where it says students must meet academic eligibility. I'm just curious, what are the eligibility requirements for four H?
Oh yeah, they cannot be failing. So it is um they have to keep their grades up and they have to keep their attendance up. Um because it is an extracurricular activity, um we have to make sure they keep both the academics and their attendance.
That would be the same as athletics.
Are they referred or is any student able to um apply as long as they're eligible?
As long as they're eligible and some of our um schools have a bigger project than others. But yes, they're all eligible. Uh many students come and join the project or the program at Robertson. They may be from our other middle schools and then the elementary students definitely come up to Robertson to join.
So is it the families will say, hey, I want my child to be in four H? Or is the teacher say, these children in my class will be great selections for four H?
Both.
Okay.
Yeah, there is both. And it and it is a highly uh known program here in Spring ISD, yes.
Is this a common request? Is this?
Oh, yes.
I mean, I remember being in school and I just assumed that four H and everything was considered extracurricular anyway, so.
Well, it is extracurricular. And the reason we have it here is we want to make sure that our board, that you are able to recognize, number one, that it's an extracurricular activity, but number two, the adjunct professors, right? So that the students are able to be counted present, they're able to receive their instruction um and not falling behind in their studies.
And another thing I love about this is it's very inclusive. Uh sometimes kids don't have the money for an animal. And I know uh our president Rhonda Newhouse has contributed a calf uh probably more than once, three of them, uh to students who uh so they can have an animal to raise. So people are so generous to this and support it.
So President Newhouse, that concludes um the items for the Innovation and Equity Teams. So with the exception of the acceptance of the grants and the ASAP program, because that does require a public hearing for it to be discussed at the at the board meeting. I like to um request that the other items be placed on the consent agenda.
Thank you, Dr. Hina Hosa. That we will do. Thank you. So as we continue tonight, I'd next like to recognize our general counsel, Jeremy Binkley.
Good evening again. Um my item is on page one twenty six, but there's actually a teal folder. So uh for those of you who had a chance to read the Hurricane Nicholas Bad Weather Days Resolution prior to tonight, um if you look in the teal folder, we have the resolution with a few track changes. I kept them marked up just so you could see what was added. Um and we added the information for the sake of just being extra clear when we get to the payroll piece. But what I will do is walk you through this because I think this may be our first bad weather day that um Ms. McDaniel and and Ms. Correa have had. Um and so when when we close for the day and we send our our employees home, generally what we try to do is still pay our employees, um especially if we're not gonna have to make up those days. And so to do that, the board has to find that it's in the best interests of the district and the community to continue to pay those funds. Um and the resolution allows us to do that. It allows us to um it allows the board to delegate to the superintendent the authority to seek any waivers, to modify the school calendar and anything else that we may need to do based on that bad weather day. And so you may not remember, but three weeks ago, we had a hurricane. And um we we took the day off Tuesday, September fourteenth. The whereas part of the resolution is just kind of building up to why we need to do this. And so really what I'm gonna do is take us down to the it is therefore resolved section. What the first paragraph does is says that we can pay employees for the days that are missed. So we can pay all the, all employees for September fourteenth. Uh the language that we added is just to make it very clear who those employees are. Full-time and half-time employees, including interim teachers and long-term substitute teachers. Uh Dr. Hill has made it clear as well that we were using interim teachers now instead of long-term subs, but just to be safe, because that's what we do in legal, we put them both in. Um and excluding all other substitute teachers. Because if you're not, if you're not an interim teacher or a long-term sub, then you didn't have, you know, you uh you weren't anticipating working that day anyway. Um and also just to make sure we're really clear, including police officers. And so that's for the days the district was closed. The second paragraph um allows us to pay those employees who had to come in anyway. So everybody gets paid, but if you had to come in and leave your family at home with a hurricane coming in um so that you could protect the interests of the district, uh we pay you your normal daily rate for that as well. And then finally, um the third further, the the third resolved, second further resolved at the bottom of the page is the blanket authorization to allow the superintendent to seek any waivers and to modify the instructional calendar. We don't anticipate needing any waivers for this one. Um and I don't believe we need to make any uh substantive modifications to the instructional calendar, except for maybe one pro forma change for for ad se purposes. Um but just in case something comes up, he'll have that delegation and be able to make those changes. And of course, anytime the superintendent does that, he always makes sure the board is aware. So are there any questions? Sorry, I kind of over explained this one, but I want to make sure everybody's on the same page.
I had a question in reference to the definition of an interim teacher versus looks like you employees, including long-term sub, what is an interim teacher, a certified teacher that's filling in for a teacher that's out or is are we using interim and long-term interchangeably, long-term sub?
So we're not exactly using them interchangeably because long-term sub is is a term that's no longer used by the state. Um and it's because of rules surrounding the teacher retirement system. So technically, what used to be known as a long-term sub is what is an interim teacher. Interim teachers can have different levels of certification and education. Our um interim teachers are paid on a differential. At the minimum, you would have to have a high school diploma. But there are interim teachers who are who have degrees, either bachelor's or master's degrees, but may not yet have certification. In some rare cases, an interim teacher is someone who has both of those and they just choose to work as an interim as opposed to working full-time, the fully certified teacher, even though they are such and have the ability to do so.
And so as lawyers were just slow to adopt change and um until we know it's completely a hundred percent safe to do so. So I would rather include both and one of them be a hun- be completely ineffective than to not include one and find out later that we might have really needed it for some reason. So um that's why we use a lot of other very archaic words in legal contracts.
Some language, we voted to change some language on something, I think, earlier this year. Was it related to this? I can't remember. The use of a long-term sub and 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 uh interim teacher. I thought we, I saw something.
We have had a previous discussion about interim teachers and how they're defined.
If there aren't any other questions, I would ask that we put this on the consent agenda for Tuesday.
Thank you, Mr. Binkley. And now, Ms. Westbrook.
Thank you, President Newhouse and members of the board. If you'll turn with me to page one hundred and thirty-six. Our first item this evening is the certification of the appraisal role, role, which is the values of all of the properties that are housed within the Spring ISD boundaries that have been appraised by the Harris County Appraisal District. And that information is provided to the district. And once we receive our certified values, we have sixty days to set the district's tax rate. And so we're within that sixty days on Tuesday evenings, based upon this certified role of values, we will set our tax rate on our UOL as the board will adopt our tax rate on on Tuesday evening. So just walking through the information that you have here and you were provided a copy back in August or or at the September meeting shortly after we received the information, but just wanted to talk you through it a little bit. So the first number that you see here in the middle of the page is the appraised value of the properties within the district's boundaries that are currently on the appraisal roll. And so that's the sixteen point eight billion dollar number. And that is before any exemptions, before the homestead exemption, before the over um sixty-five exemption, any of those exemptions. That's the total appraised value. The next number you see is the taxable value. So these are the properties within the district's boundaries that have been appraised and they're on the appraisal roll and we know what their taxable value is. That's the fourteen point two seven eight billion dollar number. The next item are properties that are within the district's boundaries. The properties have been appraised, but they're under protest. And so those those properties are listed here. They're not officially on the roll yet because they're under protest. But they're listed here at the value that would be assigned if the owner's claim of value is upheld. So in most cases, that's the lower of the two numbers. So the owner is saying that I think my my property is overvalued. So it's it's valued at a hundred dollars. I'm the owner. I think it's ninety dollars. Then the ninety is included in this number here. So if anything, that number could go up, but it won't go down because the lower number is is the owner's claim of value. The third number are properties that are in the district's boundaries. We know they belong to Spring ISD. They're not under protest, but they're not quite yet on the roll. So those are our uncertified values that will be certified throughout this tax cycle and they'll get added to the certified roll. So if you add up that taxable value of fourteen point two, the properties that are under protest, the one point seven, and the properties that are not quite on the roll just yet is that point four. The total value that we're using to calculate our tax rate and do what's called truth and taxation, which is there's a methodology that the Texas Comp Controller says we have to follow in order to set our tax rate. Our total value is sixteen point four billion, which is about a six percent increase in our values over last year. And with that increase in values and the compression of the maintenance and operations portion of the tax rate and due to the value growth and the the decrease in the IMS, interest and sinking portion of the tax rate, we're proposing to the board on Tuesday evening a decrease of five percent in our tax rate, a seven cent decrease. So we would go from one point three eight four three to one point three one two eight. And so you'll see all of that in detail on Tuesday, but I wanted to put it all into context tonight so you'll know what the values are based upon. One additional um part of, I know that's exciting. We're excited about that.
I know, I'll say that real quick and go.
Yes, the 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 rate is going down and we'll we'll get to celebrate it even more on on Tuesday with some pictures and all that. So um that's that's what we'll be bringing forth on Tuesday evening to pass our twenty twenty-one tax rate and then we'll start getting invoices in the mail. So you all get those nice shiny letters. I keep that enthusiasm up when they come in um over the next two weeks. So we'll we'll start mailing mailing bills out.
This is above what we projected?
Yes, ma'am. It is, yes. And that that's something we haven't seen happen in a while. And that, that's something we haven't seen happen in a while. Typically that April value is about what we see in August, but it, it jumped from about a three point nine percent increase to a six percent increase. And we think some of that is just the time it took to get all of the properties appraised and assessed and, and all of that. Given the pandemic. Okay, so if there are no additional questions, this portion of the tax rate will be on the consent agenda, if that's okay, on Tuesday. But of course, setting the tax rate itself will not be a consent agenda item. Okay, so our next item is on page one thirty-seven, really page one thirty-eight. And it's our monthly list of taxpayer refunds. You can see that we've refunded just over seven hundred thousand dollars on this one. And we do have one rather large refund that we, that we paid this month. And so that's a high-rise office building up in the north part of the school district. And basically the, the building's at about fifty percent occupancy and the rent rolls haven't really matured just yet. So the value was reviewed and based on that information and really not having a lot of comparables in that area, the value was, was brought down. And so that's why we're paying that substantial refund.
Westbrooks, you've had to be on here a couple of times. Is there information, what, it says it's in litigation.
Yes, and they are just fighting their, their property values that have been assessed. And so typically that means it's, it's continued through the process. And so we've gotten to the point of litigation. There are no additional questions, then we'll move to the next item, which is our monthly list of cooperative purchases that are over fifty thousand. And it's on page one forty. And I believe this is the first month with the new formatting, based upon some guidance and discussion that we had at the last board meeting. It's broken up by funding source now, so you can see the general funds with the total. And then our ESER funds, which is the, we know our federal funds that we've received as part of the COVID nineteen response. And then all other federal funds, which could include Title I funds, Title II funds, they're in that last category.
I was pleased to see the college board advanced placement test here at eighty-one thousand one hundred and seventy-seven. Wonderful way for our kids to get college credits on page one forty. And also, I noticed that we had this email from the district, September twenty-seventh, about how twenty Spring ISD high school students were honored as college board national recognition program scholars. That is awesome.
That was awesome.
That is just awesome. I, one of my son-in-laws was a Hispanic college board recognition person at Spring High School many, many, many years ago. And it just made a difference in his life because it's, it came from a family with no college graduates and he's an A and M graduate. Whoop. So anyway, I just love to see the money spent on things like that.
Yes, I don't think I've ever seen in the district that many students.
That's huge.
That's huge. That was wonderful to see.
Okay, if there are no additional questions on the cooperative list, then we'll turn to page one forty-three and one forty-four, which is our last item for financial services this evening. And this is a competitive seal proposal to identify qualified vendors to provide enrichment services to our very successful Twenty First Century program that we have operating at several of our campuses. And we had forty-one vendors respond. And what we did is go through just a qualification process. Are they capable of providing the services that are needed? And they provide their, their pricing information and all of that. And we qualify them to do business through the Twenty First Century program. But then the program coordinators, they decide based upon the needs throughout the year, how to engage with those, those vendors. So of the forty-one, we had one that was disqualified and because they couldn't provide the services necessary. And then the other was, they pulled out because they only provided the services to a level that we didn't need. And so the remaining thirty-nine, we are recommending that we qualify them as, as potential vendors in the future to provide these enrichment services for the program.
Ms. Westbrooks, what was the number we had submitted? Or responded, I guess?
Forty-one vendors.
And we have how many that we selected of those?
Thirty-nine.
Okay. And then the campus itself has an opportunity to select some of the approvals.
Yes, ma'am, through the campus and the program coordinators that oversee the Twenty First Century program.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Westbrooks.
Thank you.
One more question for you.
And it's, it's on page one forty-two, I was trying to hit the button before we moved on. Kelly Services, that's the temporary agency, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
What do we, can you explain that expense?
Yes, and so this is an expenditure that it's, it's a purchase order. So there's no expenditure that has been incurred just yet. So the purchase order is put in place in anticipation of services provided by Kelly Services. And so we know that we're having a difficult time finding substitute teachers right now. And so we've enlisted the help of Kelly Services to help us fill those gaps and increase our fill rate for our daily substitute needs. And so this is, that one point five million is in anticipation of, of those services. But at this time, we have not gotten the program going just yet.
So, okay, how do we come up with that one point five number?
So we're estimate, we're looking at our actual spend over the last two years for substitute services. And then Kelly Services, of course, charges more because they're providing an administrative service. And so we're taking that number plus that additional cost, plus what we anticipate is additional fill, which means the cost should be more, and just took the difference and that's, we got to about the one point five million.
And what, is this over a school year or?
Yes.
Oh, wow.
Yes. And that's not the total cost, that's the additional cost.
What'd you say, I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
I was just clarifying that that wouldn't be our total sub cost, that's just the total additional cost.
Okay, oh, wow, okay. So it's even more than that, but so this, what we're approving here is a purchase order just in case we need to, you know, and you will go up to that amount. And if something happens and we need more, then you'll come back to us. And we'll, okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, yes, ma'am.
Have we seen success historically with Kelly in any other area or is this a new?
This is brand new, this is our first time. And as of yet, we haven't started. We haven't found any subs, I mean, it's hard finding them everywhere. So as of yet, we have not.
It's a good avenue to explore, actually.
It is, but did we put, so, so we haven't put, how do we come up with Kelly Services, I guess? I'm just curious, because.
We did a request for proposal quite some time ago. And Kelly Services had responded to that solicitation that we did a while back. But I want to say the final version, we were able to do it with a cooperative agreement. Like they're on a cooperative, which is how they end up on, on this, this particular report. So I think originally it was maybe about two years ago, we had done the request for proposal and they did end up being one of the responding vendors, but in this circumstance, it was on a cooperative.
Well, thank you, Ms. Westbrooks.
Yes, ma'am.
That will conclude our agenda. So the board will now recess this open session and convene in a closed meeting in accordance with Texas Open Meeting Act, Section five-five-one point oh seven-one, five-five-one point oh seven-two, five-five-one point oh seven-four and five-five-one point oh seven-six. No voting will take place in the closed meeting. Any action the board wishes to take as a result of discussions in the closed meeting will take place after the board reconvenes an open session. The time is now ten sixteen. Thank you. We will now address the items discussed during closed session. Are there any motions? Since hearing none, there are no other items on tonight's agenda. So I will now entertain a motion to adjourn our meeting.
Madam President, I move we adjourn.
Do I have a second?
I will second.
It's been moved by Winford Adams and seconded by Natasha McDaniel to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. The motion carries unanimously. There's no further business, this meeting is officially adjourned at eleven twenty-nine PM. Thank you, everyone.